Interested in participating in town government, so it's very healthy and very good to see. Please note that portable listening devices are available upon request. Simply raise your hand, we'll go ahead and get one to you. Also, we have portable microphone for those who are unable to approach the microphones in the aisles for debate or questions. So simply raise your hand during debate and someone will approach you with a microphone. Tonight's proceedings are being recorded and broadcast by Area 58 Cable Television and are taking place here in the Carver Middle High School Auditorium at 60 South Meadow Road in Carver, Massachusetts. A special thanks goes out to Michael Shaw, our audio extraordinaire in the back there, as well as Rich Goulart and the team at Area 58. We really appreciate all their hard work to make sure that everybody can hear and see us. Also, Dade Seaton Topf, the Director of Operations and Maintenance for the schools and the custodial crew who helped set up the auditorium and work every day to maintain everything that you see around you. So thank you so much, gentlemen. Also, I'm sure that you all noticed a big change during the check-in process, and maybe that's why it took a little bit longer than usual. We've introduced electronic voting tonight, much to the surprise and delight of a lot of folks. I know it's been a suggestion that we do this for quite some time. We please ask that the voting clickers not leave the building. As you can assume, there's a cost associated with them, and that cost comes out of all of our pockets, so we want to make sure that we get those back and we're able to use them for several years. There will be a station where you will return them when you're exiting. I've been assured that the process of electric voting is simple and painless. I've seen it myself. It certainly looks so. And hopefully, it makes the voting process a little more comfortable while also making the meeting more efficient, which we could all use tonight, correct? We will have a brief opportunity to do a trial run on the new voting system before we get underway, so if you're a little nervous about it, we will work to get those jitters out of the way. So with that said, Town Clerk Kara Dayhill has advised me that we have a quorum, and I don't even think she needed to tell me that, because it's quite obvious. So we certainly have met the 75 voter requirement this evening, and I declare that a quorum being president, this annual town meeting will be called to order at 7:43 PM on Tuesday, April 12, 2022. With that said, we're going to go ahead and get underway here with our Pledge of Allegiance. So all who are able, please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me. Then we're going to remain standing as we observe a moment of silence for all the public servants we've lost in the past year. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. And at this point, I would like to invite Ellen Sordillo to the front microphone up here, because I've been informed that she has a very special surprise for someone this evening.
All right. I want to welcome everybody from Carver, Carver citizens, and those that are not from Carver. My name is Ellen Sordillo, and I am currently on your planning board. I am speaking to you tonight to honor a special man who has served Carver on the planning board since 2009, when he was appointed as a member. He brought a background in engineering and surveying experience to each meeting to help board members and applicants understand the permitting process. He has also represented Carver as a delegate of SERPAD, the Southeastern Regional Economic Development District, it's a most full, keeping Carver appraised of regional planning, housing, and transportation issues. I would also like to add that his calming demeanor always held things together during difficult times, and God knows we've had many. Without further ado, I'd like to present this well-deserved plaque of your service from your 2022 planning board. May I ask you to put your hands together for Mr. Bruce Mackey.
This is a complete surprise. Never expected anything like this. It's been an honor to serve Carver for the last 12 years on the planning board, and I'm only leaving because I'm getting older, so unfortunately. But I thank everyone that was involved with giving this to me. Thank you very much.
Excellent. All right. And so at this point, we will go ahead and introduce you guys to our boards and committees that are sitting before you. First, we have our Superintendent of Carver Public Schools, Mr. Scott Neave, up here in the front. And sitting amongst them is the school committee. Stephanie Clardy is our school committee chair. And Ms. Clardy, would you please introduce the other members of your committee?
Absolutely. Sitting to my left is Jennifer Pratt, who is the vice chair of the Carver School Committee. And to her left, we have Kelly Neme, who is the current secretary of the Carver School Committee. And to Kelly's left, we have Colleen Zanuski, who is a member of the Carver School Committee.
Excellent. Thank you. And then over here on my left is Mr. Mark Townsend, who is the chair of our select board. Mr. Townsend, would you mind introducing the rest of your committee?
My pleasure. Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. To my left is Sarah Hewens, our vice chair. Also to my left, Jen Bogart, Robert Balbin, and Jim Hoffman. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. And down here to my right, we have Mr. Alan Germain, our chairman of the finance committee. Mr. Germain, would you like to introduce the members of your committee?
Thank you. Good evening. To my right, your left, is Adam Holmes, our vice chair, Pat Mahal, Beth Sager, who is also the chair of the Capital Outlay Committee this year, Tony McCrane, Bill Cullen, Walter Cole, Ron Clark, and now just, and Marie Zwigman is on Capital Outlay also. Sorry, didn't mean to take your limelight, but I didn't want to leave Marie out. We're going down the whole lines.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. All right. And just a few more people up here. On my left, we have Mr. Robert Fennessey, our interim town administrator. We have Mr. Greg Corbell, our town council. And we have Ms. Kara Dayhill, our town clerk. And Ms. Sue Mokwin, our finance director. And you've probably noticed a couple extra faces up here. So we do have some folks from Meridia, the company that is providing our voting system here to help us get underway with it here this evening. So thank you to Mr. Babel and team for helping us get this working. Appreciate it. So all of these folks, as well as those who serve on all of our committees and boards, have worked so hard throughout the course of the year to make tonight's meeting happen. And all of you folks, at this point, can take a deep breath, because that work is done, and now it's up to town meeting to take care of the rest. So we really appreciate that. And so can we please have a round of applause for all of those folks on all of our boards and committees who have put this together for us tonight? Before I get started, I want to thank the people of Carver for their continued support in allowing me to serve as moderator. Serving this town has been truly an honor, and I can't say enough about how fulfilling it is to have even a small part in serving Carver's residents. If you feel compelled to get involved, there's many ways to serve, including being appointed to one of the many openings we have on towns, the towns' boards and committees. Please contact the town clerk for a listing of openings, or check out the town website. I believe there's a listing up there as well, too. I'd kindly like to ask you guys to use tonight's meeting as an opportunity to listen to the various proposals brought forth by boards and committees who have spent tireless hours preparing tonight's business for your consideration. Please be respectful of the points of view of our elected officials, town employees, volunteer committee members, and of course, your neighbors seated about the room. I'm convinced that everybody in this room is concerned about the town's best interests and equally deserve your respect and patience. Keep in mind that there are rules we follow, which are detailed by the bylaws, town meeting time, and Robert's Rules of Order, which help us steer this meeting in a civil manner. At no point will the many inappropriate behaviors that we see exhibited on social media be tolerated in this room this evening. While we may sometimes think we know precisely what the motives of another individual are, we should not draw conclusions based on hearsay or limited evidence. Keep in mind, this is not a court of law, and you do not have the right to cross-examine the witness, provide a rebuttal to every point made. Therefore, at no point should anyone attack the personal motives of someone else in the room, make disparaging remarks, or attempt to label another member of town meeting a liar or fraud. Those who wish to do so will risk being abruptly cut off and asked to apologize and rephrase their statement or otherwise yield the floor. For example, if you believe a statement has been made by someone else not to be factual, a proper etiquette is to say something along the lines of, "I believe there's significant evidence that the member is mistaken." Of course, stating the supporting evidence may add to your credibility. Everyone in the room is capable of forming their own opinion based on the information presented. With that said, let's take a moment to greet each other and set the meeting off right. Excellent. All right. I hate to cut you off, but we do have a lot of work to do tonight. On the way in, you were provided with some paperwork, so you each had an opportunity to grab a packet of information, which includes the warrant and appendix with additional information pertaining to the articles on the warrant and some information about town meeting procedure. Also, you had an opportunity to grab a copy of the 2021 Annual Report. The warrant lists each article that will be voting on tonight. Underneath the name of each article is a description of what is being voted on, followed by an informational summary explaining the article and perhaps some of the motivations behind it. I find these informational summaries very useful, because it explains in plain English exactly what it is that we're talking about. After the informational summary is a proposed motion, please note that before any business can be discussed, a motion must be made and seconded. So the proposed motion is there to help us get the ball rolling. Following the proposed motion is an indication of the vote count required for a motion to pass. Lastly, a listing is provided showing how the Board of Selectmen and any, select board, sorry, and any committee sponsoring the article voted in recommendation of the article. Some rules. Yeah, there's rules. Sorry. I will introduce each article by reading its caption and asking for a motion, and second before providing an opportunity for the sponsor or sponsors of the article to provide a brief presentation on the article. If you're presenting or you feel you may be answering questions on an article, I kindly ask that you try to sit near the front of the room. That may be a little bit of a challenge this evening, so we'll do the best we can. Only motions and amendments which are directly relative to the article at hand will be in order. Any motion or amendment which is fundamentally different from the open article may be deemed out of order at the moderator's discretion. As many of you know, we are required per town bylaw to publish the warrant seven days prior to town meeting for the appropriate purpose of allowing residents to decide whether they have interest in debating and voting on the business laid forth. Limiting debate and actions to the business on the warrant is meant to protect the rights of those who may have chosen not to be here this evening, tonight, based on the contents of the warrant. Once a motion has been made and seconded, and only after a motion has been made and seconded, will begin presentations on the debate. Any voter is welcome to speak in debate. Simply approach one of the microphones in the aisles, wait to be recognized by the moderator, state your name and address, and make the statement. Due to the circumstances, I please ask, well, just in any case, I please ask that only one person stand behind a microphone at any one time. Once that person is seated, another may approach. I will attempt to recognize people in the order that they have approached the microphone. Each speaker will be afforded three minutes per microphone appearance and two opportunities to speak on each motion. I will not recognize someone for a second opportunity to speak in debate until everyone that wishes to speak a first time has had an opportunity to do so. Legitimate questions, which are not statements posed as a question, will be considered exemptions. I will try to do my best to be flexible, that if you reach your time limit but seem to only have one or two more sentences left, I'll of course let you finish. However, if you don't seem to be wrapping up, I'll kindly ask you to do so. All debate is to be conducted through the moderator. You should not speak directly to or with other members of town meeting. Those town officials and committee members who are seated in front of you will observe the same roles as those seated before them when speaking in debate, including utilizing the microphones in the aisles if they are able. Those seated at the tables should also refrain from speaking or answering questions unless recognized. In the interest of time when speaking in debate, please be sure to state points of view and information not previously provided or questions not previously asked. When the motion is put to vote, that will be your opportunity to show your support for or against a motion. So just coming up and saying the same thing that somebody else said is not how we show our support. Our support is our voting, right? So when the motion is put to vote, that's your opportunity. Please refrain from applauding or booing. Not that anybody here would do that. If at any time you feel that I've made a procedural error, there is something you can do about that. The proper course of action is to rise to a point of order. Simply rise and state point of order. Should you try to, you should try not to interrupt another individual who's speaking unless you think that having them to continue to speak would further the procedural error. Otherwise, respectfully, we wait for them to finish before making your point of order. I'll recognize you, allow you to state your point of order, and then I will rule on it. A point of order is procedural in nature, so keep that in mind. We have a lot of folks that like to use point of order for all sorts of different things, but keep in mind that it has to do with town meeting procedure. So if you have an issue with the way that the procedure is being unfolded, then go ahead and make your point of order. It should not be used if you disagree with someone or believe their information is non-factual. You'll have your chance to speak, so you should use your chance to speak accordingly. After debate has been exhausted, I'll put the question to a vote. Alternatively, any member of town meeting can make a motion to move the previous question, which after being seconded and approved by two-thirds vote, will end debate and put the question to vote. However, I will not recognize such a motion unless debate has become repetitive and no new information is still being presented. Articles will be taken up in the order they are listed on the warrant unless a motion to advance an article or postpone an article has been made, seconded, and approved by two-thirds vote. I will not entertain any such motion without sound reason. The select board has taken great pains to prepare the warrant and has taken into consideration all feedback provided up until this point. If we have already opened an article for debate, we cannot take up another article until it can be laid on the table, which can happen only after a motion to do so has been made, seconded, and approved by a two-thirds vote. During the course of the proceedings, we may have a few individuals who are not Carver voters who are required by their official duties to speak on an article, including the town council, town administrator, and other town employees. Unless I hear any objections now, I'll let these individuals speak when recognized. Okay, hearing no objections, we will follow that. As has become our custom in the past and in the interest of time, which I'm sure you all appreciate, if there are no objections now, I will also waive the reading of the warrant. Okay, hearing no objections, we will not read the warrant. So with that said, we're going to get things underway, and as I promised, we are going to do a short test of the new voting system, just to make sure everybody feels comfy with it. So with that said, we have a test question prepared. It's a silly one. Are you happy to be inside again? I mean, we've all been through this COVID thing, and we had a lot of challenges with being indoors, and we wouldn't have been able to be this close together before. But it's also really warm outside, so I don't know. But you have a clicker in front of you. There is a one button and a two button, which the one stands for yes and the two stands for no. So go ahead and let us know. Are you happy to be inside again using your clicker? And you can see, as you vote, the total number of votes is racking up on the screen there live, through the magic of modern technology. And that is quite a healthy number there, right over here in the lower corner. 485 and counting. Oh, 480. Yep, there we go. All right. All right. Seems like we got the hang of this, so that's not too hard, right? Yeah, we can go ahead and close the vote. So the way this will work is when it's time to move to a vote, in the past, I would have said, you know, we're going to go ahead and move to the vote, and we'd ask all the yays to raise their hands and all the nays. So in this case, we'll just go ahead and say that we're opening the vote. The moment I say that we're opening the vote, these gentlemen over here will open the vote on the screen, and you'll be able to start voting. We'll give you about one minute's time to make your vote. If you make a mistake, great, you can actually change it. So within that one minute time, you can change it from yes to no or back and forth. If you're not sure, you can just hit yes, no a whole bunch of times, and then when it closes, you'll just all be surprised. But the point is, is that, you know, it should be very easy and straightforward for you guys. So we're looking forward to that. So after a minute time, I'll give them the signal to close the vote. We'll close the vote. The results will be displayed live on the screen. Also, keep in mind that the vote is completely anonymous. So if you notice when you checked in, we did not take down your name or have your name assigned to your clicker in any way, shape, or form. So there is no way to associate your name with your vote. Also, your clicker number will not necessarily appear, isn't going to appear on the screen either. So we're just going to show the number of yeses and the number of noes and the total number of votes, so. It's not the first time that someone has said my height was a challenge to them. So we can't reposition on screen. I think it's a little bit different for the articles, though, isn't it? Like, is the positioning different or is it exactly the same?
It's the same.
It's exactly the same. Okay. I can do my best to vacate my position. Is it me that's the problem?
Yes.
All right. I should have rephrased that, but yeah, I think my wife would say the same thing. Yeah, so I'll do my best to step out of the way, but I'm also going to read the count at the end after it closes, so we're going to make sure that everybody is able to hear what the vote count was, okay? Great thing is that there's really no questions, so we no longer have to, you know, do, you know, divide the room for a two-thirds vote or things like that, whatever. So this should go a lot more smoothly. Okay, with that said, we have a very full agenda this evening, and I'm remiss to say that, like, you know, we've seen a lot of these meetings with less on the agenda go two nights. And so that is a very real possibility this evening. So with that said, at this time, I would entertain a motion to fix the time at which to adjourn, so that folks can plan for when they could be out of here this evening.
Mr. Moderator?
If we do, hold on one second. If we do adjourn, we would utilize Thursday evening. We've already carved that out as an opportunity. Do I?
Mr. Moderator, I'd make a motion that town meeting entertain no new business after 11:00 PM this evening.
Okay. So we have a motion and second, that we entertain no new business after 11:00 PM this evening, which means that if we start an article at 11:00 PM, we will finish that before we leave for the evening. With that said, we'll open it to debate. Okay, seeing no motion to the microphones, we'll go ahead and put this to our first official vote. Yep.
Apparently, the childcare ends at 10 o'clock tonight.
If anybody knows anything different, let us know.
Yeah. Yeah, we have another comment.
Yeah, Alan Dunham, 11, Ricard Street. I would like to see it like 10:30, because if we can take a motion at 10:50, an article at 10:55, these could be some fairly lengthy articles, and we might not get out of here till midnight. And, you know, a lot of people have to get up at like 4:30 in the morning. Thank you. So if the motion could be amended to 10:30, I personally would like it, and I think it just makes more sense.
Okay, so would you like to make the amendment, the motion for the amendment?
I'll amend my motion to 10:30.
All right. So the main motion has been now updated to 10:30, and it's been seconded. And I hear the concern about the childcare. You know, it's a concern we have every year, and we've had meetings go on well past childcare, and we apologize for that. We'll do the best we can. So 10:30 is currently what's on the table. Any further debate on that? Okay, we're going to go ahead and open the vote. Yeah, just so that folks aren't confused, when we say open the vote, that does mean that you can vote now, so. Yep, just go ahead and vote now. Yep, this is to adjourn at 10:30. No new business after 10:30.
Hold on, hold on. The boo button at the top, is that a send button?
No, you don't have to use that. All you'd have to do is just press the yes or the no, one or two. Yeah. Good question. Okay, we're going to go ahead and close the vote. All right, so we have 417 yes and 60 no, and with that, the motion passes. Excellent. All right. Starting with Article 1, we have Annual Town Report. Do I have a motion?
I move that the town approve the 2021 Annual Report.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Do we have any presentation on this, or? Nope. So we'll go ahead and open for debate. Seeing no motion to the microphones and no hands raised, we will give you 10 seconds, and then we're going to put this to a vote. This is Article 1 for the Annual Town Report. Okay, we're going to go ahead and open the vote. Okay, and we'll close the vote. All right, so with 407 for and 20 against, the Annual Town Report is approved. All right, with Article 2, we have allocation of funds for Friscal 2022 free cash. Do we have a motion?
I move that the town approve Article 2 in the amounts and for the purposes set forth in the warrant.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded for Article 2, allocation of funds for Friscal 22 free cash. Any presentation?
May take a half hour.
I'm Robert Fantasy, I'm the interim town administrator here, and I'm happy to be here, and it's good to see everybody out here. I hope to meet every one of you someday, maybe tonight, right? So I'm going to give you a kind of a budget 101 on this upcoming budget that we have for fiscal year '23. I have these slides, and I hope I don't bore you with these slides. My wife says I can bore you without the slides, so. So I'm going to kind of go through it. I think it'll make it a little simpler when you look at the budget items that are on the warrant, and hopefully it'll go smoother, and we'll get out of here a little earlier, so. Okay, next slide. So we'll start with the budget summary. The total budget for fiscal year '22 was $46,441,350. For fiscal year '23, which we're coming into now, the proposed budget is $46,741,94. Oh, that's right, that's right, okay.
Point of order, he's talking about the wrong article.
Yeah, figured that out right now. No, no, so that's, okay, if there's any questions on Article 2. I'll just stand up here to Article 3.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to need to swap the... Okay, so on Article 2, allocation of funds for fiscal '22 free cash, we'll go ahead and open that for debate. All right, seeing no motion to the microphones and no hands as soon as we're ready here. We have, yeah.
Are we going to get an explanation of these different items?
Are you asking for an explanation of the items?
Well, I don't know if everyone knows what they're for and what is being done here. I just...
Okay, is there someone here that can speak to explaining these items?
I'm back. Okay, so this is, if you read the summary he mentioned earlier, right out on the warrants right after it, it gives an explanation of which, what these funds are going to. So the first is a health mitigation fund, and that's established to, when the town had health insurance costs, it goes into administrative cost to run that program. The North Carver Water District, I think Kevin Tracy, who's the chairman of the North Carver Water District, is here, if there's any questions about that. And that's for the debt costs, capital debt costs, correct?
Yeah.
The third one, landfill monitoring, is the, they have to take samples of the landfill that's required by DEP, and that's the cost that, to do that. The fourth one is replenished stabilization fund, and generally, we put money into a stabilization fund as a kind of rainy day fund, and I'll get into that in my presentation. So that's, $250,000 is going into the stabilization. The fifth one is compensated absences, and this is when an employee leaves or retires, the buyout of their vacation or sick time. So we put aside money for that, so it doesn't hit the budget of the department that they worked for, because that could decimate a budget for the rest of the year, so. The fifth one is OPEB, I'm sure you've heard that before. That's other post-employment benefits, and that's money that we have to pay into by putting money aside for that. So every year, generally, money goes into that account, into like a stabilization account for OPEB. G is capital maintenance, and that's basically for when something goes wrong in a town building that's not anticipated, so that there's money there so we can actually fix it, if it needs to be fixed. And the last one is emergency radio maintenance, and that's for maintenance repairs of some of the police radios or fire department radios that could get damaged in some kind of an incident, or they need some kind of maintenance. So those are the accounts that this is going into, and that's coming out of free cash.
Thank you, Mr. Fantasy.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
May I?
Yeah.
I'd like to have Kevin speak to this, too, but FinCom had no problem with A, C, D, E, F, G, and H. We had a little bit of trouble with B, and I could be 100% wrong, I'm hoping that Kevin straightened this out, but I know that the North Carver Water District is sitting with about $700,000 in their checkbook, and we're expected to pick up $198,000 debt payment. And if you look at the explanation for B, it says an amount for the North Carver Water District Enterprise Fund is intended to close an anticipated FY '22 revenue deficit to cover capital debt costs that are an obligation of the town. And we've done this every year, and we never have a problem with it, because they never have any money. This year, they've got a ton of money, and we're being asked to pick up $198,000 of it. So I would really like an explanation as to whether we should, we shouldn't. Not trying to throw you under the bus.
It's okay, I can explain it to everyone. In 2012, the North Carver Water District was given guidance by the Department of Revenue. They cautioned us about using what essentially is retained earnings to spend down deficits within the budget. We did actually contribute $50,000 toward the operational costs of the district this year from our retained earnings, but the DOR was quite adamant with us. In the past, we would spend down our retained earnings, and then there wouldn't be anything for future debt. And the district is still carrying about $6.5 billion worth of debt. So, and we're looking at the long-term thing here. I know it's painful on the upfront side, but the district had, we have to be responsible, and we have to look at the long term. We still have 29 years' worth of payments. Is that... I know it's not what you want to hear, Mr. Jermaine.
We would, we would have had this fight in a FinCom meeting, I'd much rather not do it here, so.
Gentlemen, just remember to not address each other directly.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
All right.
Through the moderator, it's entirely up to town meeting. Please, if I may, through the moderator to counsel, I don't believe we can vote to not pay this anyhow tonight, am I correct? We can't say no to item B, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, okay.
Thank you.
Can't say no to it anyway.
Thank you for the opportunity to explain.
Thank you for explaining.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further motion to the mics, actually, no further motion to the mics and no hands, this will require a majority vote. I don't have a vote recommendation from the Select Board of Finance Committee.
The Select Board approved this 4 to 0.
Okay, and Finance Committee?
FinCom approved this 7 to 0, all except B. I believe the Select Board also was all except B.
That's true, the Select Board, 4 to 0, except for B as well.
Gotcha, okay. And with that said? We don't have to separate item B. Can you come to the microphone for the benefit of everybody else here?
Sorry, John Carter, 24 Johns Pond Road, through you, Mr. Moderator. Every year, the town votes about $250,000 in order to fund the debt on the North Carver Water District, so future debt really shouldn't be a problem. The fact we've got $700,000 sitting in the fund concerns me that we're going to pay $200,000 towards these costs. Having said that, we now have a confusing article. It says that both boards have voted on every item except Article B, item B. So don't we have to separate item B from the article in order to conform to the two separate votes?
No, we don't have to, we don't have to separate items just because the boards didn't vote to recommend them. They're not really voting for them, they're just, it's just their recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, just so the body knows, the reason the Select Board didn't vote on item B is because we didn't have the information. So Mr. Tracy was kind enough to provide it now, that's why we didn't vote, just because we didn't have that information, so. Yeah, we didn't vote against it, we just didn't take any action on it.
And for clarity, neither did FinCom, we didn't take, we took no action. We didn't vote no on item B, we just took no action on it.
Okay. Seeing no further comments, or no further hands raised or motion to the mics, we'll go ahead and open the vote on this item. Again, you'll have one minute. Okay, we're going to go ahead and close the vote. All right, with 331 yes and 127 no, the motion carries. On Article 3, fiscal year 2023, operating budgets for town and enterprise funds, funding for OPEB trust and stabilization funds, do we have a motion?
I move that the town recommend Article 3 as written in the warrant.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Do we have a presentation?
The proposed budget for FY '23 is $46,741,94. 26 million, okay. Just seeing if everybody's awake still, you know, we're all kind of dozing off. So the good thing is, that's only an increase of $298,844, which is a 1.006%. So look at the revenue, where's the revenue come from? First is the levy limit, that's $27,951,662. It's how much can be raised by taxation, and with the additional proposition, 2.5, the additional amount of $698,792. New growth, we add on to that, and that's if somebody puts an addition on their house or something else is done, where there's new growth in taxation, that goes into this number. And we get that by looking at a four-year average, because you want to know kind of how the trend is in the town. So that's $350,000 added in. Debt exclusion on the buildings, that's $1,192,050, and that's added in. And then you subtract the overlay, which is set aside for abatements. If somebody files for an abatement on their taxes, you have to have the money there to then abate that tax, so $250,000 is set aside for that. So the total tax levy that gives us this revenue is $29,942,504. But that's not all the revenue. So there's other revenue that comes into the town. One is state aid, it's a big amount that comes in. It's at $12,489,064, and that's almost a 2% increase over last year. Local receipts, that can be anything from permitting fees to meal taxes and others, local receipts that come into the town. There's another big amount, that's $3,301,792, yet that's such a small increase over last year, and probably because last year was a COVID year. People weren't going out and eating at restaurants and doing that, so. And the last part of the additional revenue is the ambulance and the indirect costs. Ambulance receipts is a big, big number here, and that's $1,6834. So put all that together, mix it all up, and that becomes the amount of the budget. It's $46,000, $46,741,194. Okay, so we'll drill down a little bit on the revenue summary with the new growth. Again, I said that's on a four-year average. The state aid increases, we can add in the $45,390, which is additional chapter 78 over last year, $157,709, additional charter school aid for charter school enrollment, and $43,352 is additional unrestricted aid, can be used for anything. So that's $246,451 dollar increase for fiscal year '23. But note that this is on the governor's budget, so it hasn't gone to the House and the Senate yet. So usually, usually, it goes up from there, it generally doesn't go down from the governor's budget, so. So we'll watch that as we go along, probably near the early part of the summer. Okay, so that's the revenue. So let's look at expenditures. Now you have this money in the pot, the $47 million, and the expenditures, what happens to that? So the way this is developed is the finance director, Sue Moplin, who's over here, and I work closely with the school finance director, Ron Griffin, and the finance committee, and with Scott Neef, who's also here, the superintendent. And we worked through some of the budgets and tried to look at other ways of getting the budgets balanced and in line. And if you look at fiscal year '22, the split of the school versus town budget was 69.99% for the school and 30.01% for the town. And by working out different shared costs and putting them in a separate line item, that was, they were able to kind of close that gap a little bit, to the school budget at 67.5 and the town budget split at 32.5 of that revenue. So the school department appropriation in general, the whole school, is $21,418,428. The town side, to run the town departments, is $10,252,822. And the shared costs, which I was talking about, a lot of that is health insurance and other things. The shared cost is $12,205,256. So you're going to see all of these in Article 3 listed. Okay, so what changed from fiscal year '22 to '23? So the finance committee and the board, the Select Board recommended the following, which we've implemented in a budget proposal. The operation and maintenance is adding a new position for facilities maintenance manager. That's important, that somebody oversees all the facilities and can get into, deep into the evaluation of buildings and the need for keeping our infrastructure and working on it. The COA director salary is regraded to align with the other department heads. It was always very lower than comparable department heads. The COA council on aging increased an outreach employee from a part-time to a full-time. The veterans department also had an, had a increase in a part-time employee to a full-time. Finance department increased one staff... Finance Department increased one staff member from part-time to full-time. And these are based on needs that were brought forward by department heads and by others. The Building Inspector's salary was increased with a change from part-time to full-time, so we now have a full-time building inspector. And you'll notice in the back, when you're looking at these figures, that the Town Administrator's salary line item was reduced by 23%. Doesn't mean that the Town Administrator is getting a 23% cut, but it means that we came to the conclusion of the requirements to pay out the former Town Administrator. The police expenses increased to provide body cameras, which is a very good thing for them to do, and 9/11 equipment, in addition to contractual increases that they had in their budget. And just note that there's a 7% increase in the estimate of fuel and energy costs for the town. So that brings up the appropriations, meaning the spending. There's also fixed costs that are involved, and one of the biggest ones, obviously, is health insurance. Health insurance saw a 5% increase this year in the costs, both to the employee and to the town. There was also an increase in the pension assessment of the town. Usually that means when more people apply for retirement, and it raises our assessment, or the need is there to raise the assessment. There was a decrease, actually, of $152,892 in the Old Colony Vocational School based on their enrollment. So we pay based per person, per pupil, on the enrollment. But there was a $209,000 filed at District Schools of the Bristol Agricultural School, the Norfolk Agricultural School, and the Upper Cape Agricultural School. So there's more students enrolling in those agricultural schools right now. Are you bored yet? Somebody said yes. Okay, so we'll talk about free cash. Everybody thinks, oh, free cash, that's good, right? You get free cash. Comes from somewhere. And where does it come from? It's unrestricted funds that comes from, is generated from revenue that is collected that's more than the budget estimates. So when we do our budget estimates for the year, if we bring in more than that during the year, then obviously that has to go somewhere. That goes into the next year's free cash. Or it can be when expenditures are less than what was budgeted. So it's called turning back. So a department doesn't spend all the money that was allotted them. That money gets turned back to the town, and it stays in town, obviously. But it gets turned back to the budget, and that becomes part of free cash, too. So we had this year a very healthy free cash certification of $3,211,941. So that money is there now as free cash. Of that, and you'll see these in Article II, $250,000 went to the General Stabilization Fund, which I talked about a little earlier. $200,000 is transferred to the Compensated Absences, which is the sick and vacation payout. $225,000 to OPEB. And $389,206, that goes into this other part of Health Mitigation Administration, the landfill monitoring, the North Carver Water District, et cetera, that we talked about in the last article. Oh, this article. So the Capital Plan, the Capital Outlay Committee, looks at the needs of the town departments. And I know it's been a little slim over the last several years, but with this free cash, we're able to, they were able to recommend additional equipment being purchased and being repaired. So $2,147,735 was moved into the Capital Plan, Improvement Plan. Okay, and the next one is stabilization in OPEB funds. And again, stabilization is kind of like a rainy day fund. It's set aside money that can be used for any lawful purpose. A lot of times that's used for capital planning, to take that money out of stabilization if it's needed. So stabilization, there was last year $3,270,352, and through this budget, we're adding another $250,000 into stabilization, and it brings the balance to $3,523,52. And if you look on the historical prior year appropriations, you can see in 2022 we put in money, yet in 2021 and 2020, Carver put no money into stabilization. So it's good that we now have that money to be doing that again, because you want to build up stabilization for the need, but it also helps your bonding rate when you go for loans and so forth. The OPEB balance was $2,618,954, and we're adding $225,000 into that out of the free cash. And that brings it to $2,843,954. And if you look, though, in the OPEB, unlike stabilization, every year there's been money put aside in that, which is a good thing. I mean, again, you have to bring that balance down. So we are at the final slide, Revenue-Cost Summary. So again, remember the revenue that came in is $46,741,944. There's the cost of the town appropriations, school appropriations, shared cost appropriation, the Capital Plan, and the cherry sheet assessments and overlay. All that adds to $46,741,944, and there you have a balanced budget for '23. Thank you.
Thanks again, Mr. Finacy. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and open Article III up for debate. Seeing no hands and no motion to the mics, we'll go ahead and open, actually, I'm sorry, I'll let you know what the recommendations are here. It does require a majority vote. Recommendation by, for Part A, by the Select Board is 5-0. The Finance Committee, 8-0. School Committee, 5-0 for the school budget. In Part B, it's a Select Board, 5-0, and the Finance Committee, 8-0. And we'll go ahead and open the vote. Okay, we've got 10 more seconds. And we'll close the vote. All right, with 395 yes and 51 no, the motion carries. Noticing that you guys are really getting the hang of this voting thing. It's pretty simple, huh? So we're going to go ahead and cut the time a little bit down to 30 seconds so that we can try to move things along a little bit better here, because it looks like everybody's got a handle on it. It looked like most of the votes were in around the 30-second timeframe. Yeah?
Sorry, I would just like to make a motion to move Article 38 to be the next vote. And I know you said that we have to have proper justification for it, and I'm prepared to offer that. I know that there's a lot of anxiety about that article in particular in the town meeting, and there's been a wide-scale mobilization effort to get as many people here to vote for it as possible. And I feel that if we're on the current pace we are now, and that article is moved to Thursday, we may not have the attendance as we do tonight, as people had to make time to come here.
All right, so that was for Article 38, sir? Okay, so we have a motion for, to advance... Yep, gentlemen, could you just state your address and your name?
Yeah, Justin Carpenter, Woodhaven Street.
Okay. Excellent. So we have a motion on the table to advance Article 38 to be the next one that we take up. Motion's been made and seconded. Okay, one second is sufficient. With that said, we'll go ahead and open that for debate. It is debatable. Yes, sir.
Alan Dunham, 11 Rikard Street. With all due respect to the people making the motion, there are a lot of different articles...
Can you speak a little bit more?
I'm sorry. There have been accused of being soft-spoken. Amazing. Basically, with all due respect to the people making the motion, there are a lot of articles that other people would like to see moved up, and just because there's a big turnout for it and they're afraid they may not get it for Thursday, I do not believe that that is justification for moving an article that far out of order from the town warrant. It's just my opinion. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dan Badger, 165 Plymouth Street. All due respect to the, all the individuals that did a great job putting the warrant together. I think it's important, and I think the show of the audience that is here, if there is a vote to move an article in a given order, there's, all these things are going to be voted on, but we want to take advantage of however many people are here. They are here for a reason. They're here because there are different things that they're passionate about that mean something to them, and we want to give them a chance to have a voice. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dan Farini, 84 Fosdick Road. This is one of the hardest contested items in town right now. We've got one of the biggest sizes of town, the town meeting tonight. We've got a proposal. I recommend that we vote on that proposal to bring that article to vote early tonight and get it done and get it over with.
Sir, are you raising your hand? What's that? You'd like someone to bring you a microphone? We can do that. Hold on one moment, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Grant, 9 Williams Drive in Carver. This Article 38 is very important to the town. There are a huge attendance because of it. I think it's best to debate this and vote this article when everybody is here and present, and we have everybody's attention and fully focused.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, over here on the right.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. All due respect to the people looking to move the article forward. As stated before, the Select Board and the people, the town officials, put a lot of time into putting these articles where they think they should be on the warrant. And I think they should remain where they are. And if that article is that important to that many people, they'll be here on Thursday, right?
No booing, folks. No booing. Let's try to be cordial about this. We need to respect everyone's opinion. I have one over on the left-hand side here.
Donna Foran, 278 South Meadow Village. I just wanted to say, my husband is at Children's Hospital working right now, and he wasn't even going to get here till Thursday, because we thought 38 would be presented on Thursday. So I would ask that our town officials put this warrant together, and they put it together in a specific order, and I suggest that we leave it the way the people that were elected or presented put it together. Thank you.
Yeah, in the middle.
Brenda McCall, 34 Kennedy Drive. My question is, is if the article does get moved up and all the people in the room, will you guys just get up and leave? Will you just all get up and leave after the vote, because there are other really important articles? Like, I'm here for Article VIII, and there's a lot of people here that are here for Article VIII. And if everybody in the room, we do 38, and the room empties out, then where does that leave the rest of things?
Sir on the left here.
Yes, my name is Martin Madden, 52 Main Street. The reason why this auditorium is filled, let's face it, it's Article 38. Now, I see quite a lot of articles, actually, they're not being thrown in question form, yes or no, because I don't follow politics. But the vast majority of people here is for Article 38. Now, if you tell me Thursday is for Article 38, I'll come back Thursday. But I'm telling you, that's what half of this is, and you've already admitted it in the vote of turnout. So it's a reality.
Thank you, sir. Sir on the left.
David Jewell, 275 Tremont Street. We have these really cool voting buttons. Can't we put this to use and vote on moving Article 38 up?
Yeah, at this point, that's certainly the intent, sir. Okay. All right, so this, this motion will require a two-thirds vote. Seeing no further motion to the mics or hands raised, we're going to go ahead and open the vote. What's that? Oh, okay, so a vote, we have a question in terms of what does a yes or no mean? So a yes means that we are going to advance Article 38, and no means that we will leave it in its current position. So have 30 seconds from now. All right, we'll give you 10 more seconds. Okay, we're going to go ahead and close the vote. Okay, and with a two-thirds majority, the motion passes with 323 yes and 157 no. All right, so with that said, we're going to move on to Article 38. And this is regarding, well, I'll go ahead and read this because it's petition article. We don't have a, you know, anything other than a brief description here. So the town hereby adopts a temporary 11-and-a-half-month moratorium to March 26, 2023, on the new use of land for battery storage effective immediately upon town vote. During the moratorium period, the town shall adopt new zoning bylaws for battery storage and undertake a planning process that addresses the current and future impacts of battery storage facilities on Carver's residents. Consider the long-term objectives for additional battery storage facilities in the town and their impact on health, safety, and welfare of the town. With that said, do we have a motion? I have a motion? Can you state the motion, please? So is it basically, did you just say it like as written in the warrant? So, is it, is it basically, did you just say it like as written in the warrant? Yeah? Okay, did, did we have a point of order? Can you come to the microphone, please?
Point of order, are they saying who they are that's making the motion?
Yes.
Yeah, he did. Yeah. Um, I, I know this gentleman asked for a microphone before, so can we get him a microphone so people can hear him, please?
Can you just raise this hand? Because I don't see both of you. Thanks.
Hi, Mr. Moderator, I move that we accept, uh, Article 38.
Just state your name and address, please.
Oh, Paul Grant, 9 Williams Drive in Carver. Move that we accept Article 38 as written in the warrant.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, we have a motion, we have a second? Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Uh, would, uh, does the petitioner have any, uh, presentation or explanation for the article? No? Okay. Uh, with that said, we'll go ahead and open it up for debate. Uh, over here on the left.
Hi, not necessarily a point of order, but a clarification on the article itself. Um, it was said at a public meeting.
Sir, uh, name and address, please.
Hi, I'm, uh, Brendan Spencer. Um, I am a non-resident, but I was just seeking clarification.
Hold on one sec. So, as a non-resident, you're not, uh, permitted to speak unless, uh, town meeting gives you leave to do so. Uh, so, with that said, uh, would you, would you like us to, to proceed with voting on whether or not to allow you to speak?
Sure.
Okay, um, and, uh, so, uh, again, state your name, please, and where you're from.
Um, Brendan Spencer, Boston, Massachusetts.
Okay, and are you representing any, uh, organization this evening?
I am, uh, the Safe and Reliable Energy Storage Coalition.
Okay. Uh, with that said, um, we will, uh, go ahead and put this up for a vote in terms of whether or not to let someone, uh, who's a non-resident, non-voter, uh, speak before town meeting.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator.
Yeah.
We already dealt with this at the beginning of the evening. So, is everybody going to come down off the, uh, up, and we're going to vote on every one of them? We already voted, we already made mention of who we were going to allow to speak tonight that was a non-resident.
No.
This gentleman wasn't one of them.
No, we made, we made, uh, our typical allowance for, uh, folks who are, uh, rep, town representatives or, or people speaking in official capacity. So, this is above and beyond that, so, uh, this would get put to a vote.
And I'd like to see a Carver resident have the opportunity to speak first.
Mr. Moderator, I agree.
We're the ones that pay the taxes here, not the coalition from Boston.
Okay. All right. Um, all right, so, on your point of order, Mr. Jermaine, um, I think it's reasonable to allow that to happen. So, I think that, uh, we will allow the residents to speak first, and then, sir, uh, after we've exhausted all commentary from the residents, uh, we will go ahead and entertain an option, uh, to the town to allow you to speak.
Understood.
All right, thank you. Uh, yes, uh, I'm not, I think you were first. Oh, we're see first. Okay, thank you.
Well, she's actually the petitioner. So, Mary should be allowed to speak.
Uh, by all means, yes.
Okay.
Mary Dormer, 162 Plymouth Street. I'm here representing Carver's concerned citizens, and we have put forth this petition, uh, to put a moratorium on the, um, the battery storage for 11 and a half months so that, um, hazard control, um, mitigation can be done, so that we can figure out whether or not, um, it's in the right neighborhood, uh, Cranberry Point. And I know that that's a whole issue that has been said that it is not, um, that this will not affect Cranberry Point. I do not believe that is true. What I believe is that if we speak, if we speak up as a community, we can stop this. We can stop Cranberry Point until we get proof of insurance, we get proof that the firefighters are going to be taken care of, that our groundwater is going to be taken care of, that our community and our town is going to be taken care of, and that we are not going to be taken advantage of anymore by these big companies coming in and trying to do things when we don't want it. We, they need our permission. Thank you.
Okay, sir.
Alan Dunham, 11 Ricard Street. Mr. Moderator, through you, with all due respect to the petitioner, to, through you to Town Council, will this article, if passed as written, have any impact on the current battery storage project that has already been approved and met with all the different committees? Does this article, in fact, block it?
Uh, through you, Mr. Moderator.
Yeah.
Good evening. So, um, this is a, a zoning bylaw. So, under General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 6, there are certain uses that are quote-unquote grandfathered from a new zoning bylaw. So, according to the statute, a new zoning bylaw would not apply to structures or uses lawfully in existence or lawfully begun, or to a building or special permit issued before the first publication of notice of the public hearing on such ordinance or bylaw. Um, in addition, certain other uses that are subject to, um, endorsement on plans for approval not required or receiving subdivision approval also have grandfathered status from changes in zoning bylaws. I have not personally worked on the current battery storage project, and whether or not it's grandfathered is, is highly fact-specific. I know that, um, the interim planner is here. He may know more about the status of that project than I do, although I did at one point receive an email from a proponent of that project indicating that they already have a special permit from the planning board. If that is correct, then it is likely that that project would be considered grandfathered. Um, but again, it's, it's a highly fact-specific question. Um, and without having all those facts in front of me, I can't give you a conclusive answer.
I, I appreciate it, uh, Mr. Carver. Uh, one quick follow-up, Mr. Moderator, if someone can answer this. Can an article be approved that directs the town and forces them to rewrite a bylaw? Because isn't it, in effect, what this article does, doesn't it say to create a new bylaw?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Um, so, um, well, what the, the, if this article were to pass, then there would be a moratorium on these types of projects for a certain period of time. The purpose of a moratorium is to allow the town to study the issue and to decide whether or not, um, the subject should be regulated further than it is now. Um, you are not, at the end of that process, required to enact a bylaw. Um, however, the purpose of this is to enable you to study the issue, and, um, there, there does, would need to be some study of the issue to decide whether or not to bring another bylaw back to a town meeting prior to the expiration of the, the moratorium. If nothing is done within that time, the moratorium will expire, and these projects will again be subject to the original zoning bylaws as if nothing had happened.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and I appreciate your time, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, sir. Uh, over here. Uh, she, uh, she already spoke once, so we're going to let everybody else speak before you have another opportunity, miss. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Uh, Dan Badger, 165 Plymouth Street. Uh, Town Council, uh, made some of my point for me, um, in terms of, uh, a yes vote on this would translate into, uh, simply a study of this issue. Uh, but beyond that, um, the word grandfathered was used quite a bit, and sometimes when we try to make our arguments for things, the word precedent is used as well. Um, one thing that's a problem with that is that I think the more we study things, the more we gain information on things, the more we realize that what was once grandfathered in may not be the current best practice for, uh, a given issue. So, I think a no vote, um, translates into what I would describe as a fire-ready aim approach, um, without having all facts in hand, without at least confirming whether things are safe, confirming whether or not this is, in fact, the best idea or best approach for this town, the best location, um, and the best approach. So, um, you know, my, my request is that we, uh, vote in favor of this vote, of this, uh, particular article, because all it does is it gives us the facts to get a better understanding of what it, what it is we're talking about. Because I don't think I'm mistaken in that a lot of residents are still trying to get their head around what all this means, what, what is, what is safe, and is this something that we want in our town. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, over here on the right.
Dan Farini, 84 Fosdick Road. Um, first off, I'd like to thank all of you for coming out tonight to voice your concerns and make all of our voices heard. I'd like to give you my reasons why this moratorium should be approved. I've done some research on the issue and would like to inform you of some of the things I've found. First off, who are we dealing with? Cranberry Point Energy Storage is owned by a company called Power Plus. Power Plus is a private-funded company. When you search and you finally find the company's website, it does not list any corporate offices, no CEO, no CFO. It appears to be a shell company. So, if anything goes wrong, there is no recourse to go after the owners of the company. They will just fold up and move away. Also, why would any company that is, has nothing to hide and supposedly safe and state that they're environmentally friendly, send a, a letter to our selectmen requesting that the moratorium not be allowed to be voted on tonight? And they have even gone as far as contacting our local Senator Mark Pachico and asking him to intervene in the process. And what are we dealing with? It's 150 to 300 megawatt lithium battery storage facility, and what does that mean? If not the largest, but, but one of the largest facilities to build, to be built, it's going to consist of a minimum of 116 tractor trailer truck-sized batteries containers. The containers will cover over six acres that will be clear-cut to have the containers put in. The battery farm also sits in the middle of one of the most densely populated residential areas of Carver. It will run from the high-tension lines from Craig Street all the way down to North Main Street. And 99% of the abutters of the project were never notified and only have found out by word of mouth. We need to improve this moratorium. We do not want the lithium batteries in our neighborhood. I'll give you some examples of what's going on. Morris, Illinois, July 2021. 3,000 people were evacuated, evacuated from their homes for over three days. The fire department used 1,000 pounds of Purple K, which is a fire we tried, to try and stop the fire, but it didn't work. They finally brought in 28 tons of cement to put on the fire to put it out. Between 2017 and 2019, 23 of these storage facilities in South Korea were linked to lithium-ion battery fires. In August of 2021, Victoria, Australia burnt for days. It took four days for 150 firefighters and 30 fire trucks to finally put out the fire. This is what we're facing if it goes in. Not only do we need to worry about the fire hazard ma, mentioned above, but toxic gases, fumes, and contamination to our water. The only water source for all of us that runs underneath this area.
Sir, we're at, we're at three minutes, so just.
All right, I have two more sentences, please.
Okay.
We have a great courageous fire, volunteer fire department, and I want to thank you all for keeping us safe and protected. But even the large cities mentioned earlier, will, were not able to deal with this. So, I am asking, we the people, yes, we the people of Carver, stand up tonight and on all the show Cranberry Point Storage, but our town government, the state representatives, that we do not, together, we are in opposition of this project. The last thing I have to say is, I've been told it's too late, but I found out not all the, not all the permits have been issued for this farm, and also, the state has been waiting to find out and see what the people of Carver decide tonight before they move forward with the state's permit. They're listening, they're watching, and they're waiting for us to make a decision. Thank you.
Is there, is there a point of order? Or do you have somebody else that's? Oh, okay. Uh, and was this person up here before, or? Okay, all right. Is it okay with you, sir?
Uh, Robert Keniston, on the 9th Center Street in Carver. Uh, I have this curiosity as to, has anybody done any evaluation of this process? Uh, the fire department, border help? Anybody come in here and determine what the effects of this project is going to be on the environment before they issue permits?
Hold on, hold on a sec. So, just to clarify, we're not voting on a specific project. We're voting on a, on a general moratorium against projects in general. So, uh, the fact that, that, that someone may or may not have done research on a particular project, um, it may, may not be relevant in this situation, so.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. I just, uh, the gentleman mentioned questions about fire safety, so I just wanted to make a quick statement if I.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Craig Weston, 17 Main Street, your fire chief. As your fire chief for almost 17 years and serving the Carver Public Safety for 34 years, the integrity of my family and the Carver Fire Department has always been and always will be my highest priority. I certainly hope I have proven that, serving all of you throughout my career. In 2018, when my family was approached by a renewable energy company in regards to a proposed energy storage facility, I immediately recognized that as your fire chief and the authority having jurisdiction, I needed to remove myself from the process in allowing an unbiased, public safety review of the project. I then filed a document called the Disclosure of Appearance of Conflict of Interest, as required by Mass. General Law, with the Town Administrator Office, the Select Board, and the Town Clerk's Office. As part of that disclosure, I delegated my full authority as the fire chief to Deputy Fire Chief Eric Jermaine on all issues pertaining to this parcel. Deputy Jermaine has the authority to oversee Assistant Deputy Fire Chief Jesse Boyle on all code reviews, permitting, and all special permits required by the fire department on this matter. If Deputy Jermaine needed to discuss this matter at a higher level, he could refer to the Town Administrator or individuals at a state level. Additionally, in order to eliminate the appearance of any future conflicts, I removed myself from the involvement in input on all renewable energy projects submitted to the fire department. As all projects are reviewed by Assistant Deputy Boyle in charge of code enforcement with assistance from Deputy Eric Jermaine if needed. With that said, I will defer any questions in regard to the public safety on this matter to Deputy Jermaine and Assistant Deputy Boyle. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Weston. Uh, and the gentleman over here, does, does that satisfy your question? Do you have specific questions? We're up to get him the microphone again, I'm sorry.
My main concern is that somebody is looking into this matter to see if it's beneficial or it's detrimental to the town and the residents in that neighborhood. And I don't know that it's been looked into. You know, maybe we'll have to have MIT do a survey and tell us that this is a, a safe project. All battery projects are general.
So, yeah, I apologize for the issues of the microphone. So, uh, again, the, the scope of the article is, is regards to a, a moratorium on this type of project. So, the, the conversation should be regarding the, the merits of whether we should do a moratorium or not. Uh, not necessarily in terms of, of whether or not it's, it's safe or what have you. Um, it, in, in intent, and this was sort of described when, um, the article was, was, uh, explained to us, this gives us an opportunity, perhaps, to explore some of these issues with safety and things like that and so on. So, um, I think to try to address all of those concerns here on the floor tonight would be a huge challenge. Uh, and I think the petitioner is asking us, uh, and that's my understanding anyways of this article, is the petitioner is asking us to put this moratorium in place so that we can do this homework. Uh, so, I think you're asking for the, the homework before it's actually been assigned, so. Uh, the microphone is turned off. Oh, I think it's, I think it's working now.
I would just think that all of this should be taken.
I would just think that all of this should be taking place before the moratorium is put on. It should have been researched before we brought it up to allow the project to go ahead.
Yeah.
The moratorium go on.
Okay, well, that's duly noted, but it's not within the scope of what we're trying to vote on here, so.
Thank you.
All right. I believe the gentleman here with the hat on was next. Yeah.
Yes, Paul Signarella, 15B Main Street. I just want to say, as the director of butters of this project, I am 100% for the moratorium because this technology, as this gentleman before me said, this company has been under multiple different names, and they've approached director butters before trying to do a buyout or a percentage of what they bring in as gross capital to pay people to kind of grease the wheels for the project, and it's since been relocated further off of the property line to not include my property and now solely on, I believe, Weston Boggs. It just goes to show that since the company's name, I believe it being under the same project, has jumped multiple times, that we should go into a moratorium to further research the company as a whole and this technology being in the absolute infancy levels as like a battery storage facility has only been out for the past couple of years, and it's been about 50/50 whether it's good or absolute chaos. And yeah, I'm just here to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So over here in the stripe shirt?
Hi, Liz Taylor, 31 Russell, Tucson. First, I thank you. This is so different than last year when we were, again, fighting projects that don't belong in our backyard. So thank you guys for showing up. This is so important to Carver. Secondly, I want to thank the thousand people that we got in the spring to write to the state who did not want this project in our backyard. For any of you who are on Facebook, we started a letter-writing campaign. We had 1,000 letters sent to the state that said, "Not in my backyard." So I implore you to please vote yes for this. Our fight is not over, it's just beginning, so please continue to stay involved if you appreciate what Carver is. I've been a lifelong resident. I went to school here, I grew up here, I bought a home here, my children come to school If you're for the future of this town and the beauty that it has and will hopefully continue to have for generations, I really implore you to think very thoughtfully about what a project like this would look like in the town. Just an example, you were just talking about safety, and certainly I'm not a fire chief and I don't understand fire safety. What I do understand, and this is public knowledge, that the fire that was recently in Victoria, Australia, required a three-mile radius of a lockdown. So in the proposed area, which I also understand a yes vote may not stop this, but we can continue to fight it from the state level, we can fight it from a local level, we can continue to propose tougher bylaws that protect our citizens and not companies. In Victoria, Australia, it was a three-mile lockdown. Anyone lived within three miles of that fire was not allowed to leave their home for three days because of toxic smoke that was released during that fire. The proximity of where the current plant is proposed would include the elementary school, would include senior housing, would include the most densely populated area in Carver. So please think before you vote tonight. It's for 12 months or 11 and a half months to think about what is the proper direction that our town should be moving into.
Okay, so I just want to just throw out a word here that we've heard some variety of perspectives here. We've heard a lot of information about the safety, and we've heard a lot of information about other issues that have been had with other facilities. So let's try not to continue to rehash those. Again, the spirit of this article is, should we impose an 11 and a half month moratorium on these battery storage facilities? And we might want to discuss the merits of what we would do with that moratorium, why we are instituting that moratorium. So the safety and whatnot, and anything that might pertain to a particular project would not be within scope. So just try to keep that in mind, and so if somebody's already said something, let's try not to rehash that, and let's try to stay focused on, again, what we would do with the time given to us here by this moratorium. Over there? Okay, gentleman.
John Gasky, 162 Plymouth Street, speaking tonight as a citizen. But with regards to this moratorium, one of the things we have to think about is what our zoning bylaws say currently with regards to these types of structures. In our bylaws right now, the battery storage is mentioned only one place and one time. There's a chart, and at the bottom of that chart, right underneath the solar, large-ground mount solar installations, is battery storage. And that chart horizontally across talks about every district in the Carver area, the Carver zoning area. And underneath that, in every box across there, there is yes with a special permit. So it can be in a residential area, it can be put into industrial area, it can be put in anywhere in the town with a special permit. Solar doesn't get that. Solar has probably five or six pages of bylaws governing how they're built, where they go, what needs to happen. Battery storage has nothing. The closest thing that can be used as a guide is a standard building permit with standard building permit setbacks. So when you think about that, you're looking at a building that stands about 20 feet tall, and how far setbacks are for a building that's only 20 feet tall. This is why we need the moratorium, so that we can explore what's needed for this town, where these things should go, and what kind of regulations we need to control. That's it.
Eric Jermaine, 196 Main Street, I'm your deputy fire chief. Please excuse me for a moment, I can try to pull this up a little bit. Through you, Mr. Moderator, and no disrespect to the people behind me, I don't mean to face my back away from you. I'm here tonight not to persuade you in any direction, persuade your vote. I have my own personal opinions on this article, but what I will speak to, and we had two people in the audience tonight reference the fire department and our capabilities and the safety of our firefighters and the safety of these projects. I thank those folks for bringing that up tonight in a respectful manner, but unfortunately, although I'm not on social media, many people have come to us in the fire department and shown us things that our own town residents have brought forward, basically questioning the capability of your fire departments, of your firefighters, our dedication, and we take extreme offense to that. So what I would like to say, through you, Mr. Moderator, I'm going to take a couple moments to address those issues and tell you, explain to folks that may not have any idea who your fire department is and what we do.
So, sir, hold on one second. With all due respect, okay, quiet down, folks. If somebody wants to make a point of order or whatever, make a point of order, but we need to only speak when recognized. Thank you. So, sir, again, the spirit of the article is about 11 and a half month of moratorium, okay? So we're not discussing the safety of a particular project or the merits of doing a battery storage project or not doing a battery storage project. It's about the moratorium and how the moratorium might benefit us. So strictly speaking, my advice would be to speak about what we would do with that additional time. So if, for instance, you have some suggestions about how the fire department might use that time to do the research or something like that, that would be within scope. Any discussion, any specific discussion about safety and things like that would seem to be discussion about whether or not we should approve a project in this town, and that's not what the article's about.
Okay. That's great. It's acceptable for people to slander your fire department on social media but not allowed to speak about that. What I will say...
Well, hold on.
You're absolutely right.
What, hold on.
I'm going to address your point.
Hold on. With all due respect, what's been said on social media, whatever, this unfortunately isn't the place to do it. I feel sorry that that's happened, but this isn't the place to air our grievances, okay? So again, we have to keep it focused on what's going on here, not necessarily to defend our reputation. We have a point of order?
You allow a gentleman on that side of the room to talk about all his research he did on this type of storage unit, and this person here that we pay a good salary to has done research as well. I think we should give this gentleman the chance to talk.
So, yeah, the fact of the matter is that we got off track, and I was trying to pull us back on track, okay? So things happen, that happens or whatever, but...
Mr. Moderator, there was a question posed by a resident as to the process, the vetting process for a project such as this.
Yep, but we're not discussing a project.
Okay, I was going to say, if that's allowed, I could certainly speak a little to that.
Yeah, we're not discussing a specific project. So also, keep in mind that, you know, when we're listening to people speak, whatever, sometimes it can take me a little while to figure out what someone's getting to, what their point is that they're getting to. So it could likely be that someone is saying, hey, these are all the various types of issues that we want to look into when we have this time to look into it, right? And so I think, again, if you want to speak to that nature, is to say, like, this is the process, this is the vetting process that we would like to outline and put together in order to make that more formal, so that we can, you know, present that at the end of this 11 and a half month moratorium, then that's fine. But let's try to keep the comments focused on the moratorium and what we do with that versus the merits of any particular project.
So I guess what I would say, you asked about the moratorium and what we would do in that timeframe, we've already done that, and that was the point that the gentleman had asked. The fire department has done their review process for, and again, I don't want to talk about a particular project, but we've done our due diligence in our research, and we made our recommendations already. So the moratorium for us would be the same process.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Sure. Yeah. I did not see who was first, the middle or... Okay, middle.
Eric Weston, 18 Main Street. Mr. Moderator, to the point, you're focused on the moratorium, but the moratorium is based on information of safety and many other things that they want to discuss over the next 11 and a half months. The fire chief, the deputy or assistant deputy Boyle, would be our town experts to provide information on the safety. These are UL, NFPA, electric code, there is things beyond my capability of understanding that signify what's safe, what isn't. People can make their own conclusions, but it is relevant to the article. People are basing this moratorium, we have a bylaw, they're basing this moratorium on the fact that this wasn't approved properly, or that they're unsafe in some capacity, or that it wasn't a vetted project, or that there aren't codes to support the safety of the citizens. These are the people that need to speak, so I would prefer them to speak.
Okay, so what I would entertain is, there should be a moratorium because XYZ. There should not be a moratorium because of XYZ, okay? So it's very plain and simple, again, it has to be about the moratorium, it can't be about any specific project, or should we greenlight these projects or should we not greenlight these projects, because that's not what it says here, right?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, would it be fair, I'm not into specific projects. The moratorium is on projects as a whole. So I think it's fair to address projects as a whole, battery storage as a topic, solar as a topic, and the accusations made for or against battery storage would be relevant to the moratorium. The moratorium's existence or need to happen is all based on battery storage and its process. Is it safe? Is it not safe? How is it? What type is it? All of that is relevant to the moratorium. The moratorium is to shut down our bylaw. We have a current bylaw. We're a green energy community, we worked hard to be that. We have a solar bylaw. You know, very early on, we had a year-long process to get that solar bylaw that included battery storage, because all green energy is including battery storage. Then we changed that solar bylaw, amended it here at a town meeting, long town meeting. We've done that again. So we have a bylaw in place, and bylaws can be changed, but this is a moratorium. The moratorium is based on the fact that people have a problem with the bylaw, they have specific concerns about the bylaw that they're saying are safety-based and fire-based. So I think it's fair that they address that. They know NFPA codes.
Yep. So again, if it's stated in a manner of, we should enact a moratorium because, or we should not enact a moratorium because, then that's fine. But if we just get into the general safety and things like that or whatever, it sounds to me like we're talking about whether or not we are for or against a battery storage facility in the town, okay? And that's the direction I don't want to go down, because that's a conversation for another day.
Well, I think as, you know, professional fire representatives, they're not for or against it in a public setting. I think what they are is they can provide the information or address possible misinformation, because all of this is based on information citizens have received. Some accurate, some not.
Okay, I've made my point. Yes, sir.
Hi, Matt Kenniston, 9th Center Street. I think I have a question that'll help make this a little bit more expeditious, and then I have a, I guess, a clarification that I was looking for. The first question is, and I think this is more direct, I think a lot of citizens here, and I fully understand the wording of the article and how it is put forward, however that being said, I think a lot of citizens here are here in regards to that specific project. Now, I don't want to discuss that specific project, however, that being said, would such a moratorium being put in place, and I don't know that the question was really specifically answered earlier, would such a moratorium, if voted yes, and put in place, prevent that specific project? Because I think that would solve half of the time of people coming up here.
Yeah, we have answered it, but we'll give a few seconds to clarify.
Yes, through you, Mr. Moderator. So as I mentioned earlier, I cannot give an opinion as I sit here tonight as to whether a specific project will or will not be able to go forward once this bylaw is imposed or not imposed. Each project has to be assessed on its own specific facts, and I can't, you know, give an opinion on a specific project one way or the other, because what I say here may end up being used, you know, against the town in any future litigation that may come up surrounding that particular project, or any permitting procedures that may go forward with respect to that project. As the moderator has said several times, we're here to talk about whether or not it is necessary to enact a moratorium on these projects going forward, whether or not it affects this one, because there is a need for further study. And my suggestion as town council is that we not engage in specifics of this project, because in my opinion, it's not in the best interest of the town to do so in this forum. But, you know, as the moderator said, we've heard discussion as to why a moratorium is necessary, why people think that the current bylaw or the current situation is not good enough to protect the residents. In my opinion, it would be appropriate, if there is anybody who wishes to say this, to say the other side of that coin, you know, why we do not need a moratorium, why the current laws are sufficient to protect the town. You know, I think that's the type of debate that the moderator is looking for. You know, I think that's the, the type of debate that the moderator is looking for. Why do we need it, why don't we need it, without looking specifically at the facts of a particular project.
Understood, thank you. And, and that clarification question, i-if I may afterwards, uh, I think voting on a moratorium, it would help individuals to understand what we're doing prior to said moratorium to approve projects, and I think that's what our, uh, I'm sorry, was it, was it assistant deputy? I'm so sorry. Um, but, but the gentleman speaking prior was trying to explain, and I think people understanding what that process looks like prior to a moratorium and after a moratorium would direct the vote on this and help get that to the end of us actually voting.
Okay. Um, all right, so, with that said, um, if, uh, Mr. Germaine, Deputy Fire Chief, would, would like to make a statement that does address what the current process is, so that the voters can decide whether or not due diligence has already been done on these types of projects, I will allow that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, Eric Germain, 196 Main Street. Uh, so, Assistant Deputy Jesse Boyle is our code enforcement and compliance officer, and so he has done the lion's share of the research and preparation, uh, for this project, and, uh, I'd like to ask him, through you, Mr. Moderator, to come up and speak on the merits of the project and the process that we use to...
So, okay, again, we can't speak on the merits of a specific project, so, so the specific instructions that are given is to please address this gentleman's concern about what the current process is for vetting these types of projects, so that the voters can decide whether or not due diligence has already been done. Does that make, make sense? Is that clear?
Yes, sir, Mr. Moderator, I understand that.
Okay.
Hello, everybody, I'm Jesse Boyle, the Assistant Deputy Chief of the Fire Department, and, uh, as Deputy Germain stated, uh, my role in the Fire Department is code enforcement and fire prevention. Um, and I'm going to speak to the process, not this particular project that everybody's here for, but the process in general, uh, which we've gone through several times. Um, again, not the particular project that we're talking about, but there have been many other projects that have come before the town, before the Fire Department for battery storage, for planning and fire prevention purposes. And I know Mr. Mackey stood up a moment ago, and I think he was probably going to talk about the same thing, to answer Mr. Kennison's question earlier. Yes, there's a process for this. Yes, the planning board has to review all of these projects. It's essentially something, something that's called a site plan review. When the developer puts forward the proposal, we get to review all the documents, all of the engineer documents, compare them to what the fire codes, what the building codes say, and also compare to see what our capabilities of our Fire Department are, and to make sure that those two things are aligned together. Uh, and I can say that, and that we already have existing projects that have been permitted and existing for battery energy storage, and I can assure you that your Fire Department is prepared to respond to that. And no matter what happens with this vote tonight, whether we, whether it passes or fails, and I am standing up here right now as a representative of the town, not a personal resident, this Fire Department will be prepared no matter what. If it stops, if it starts, we already have battery energy storage projects in town, and we're very well equipped to manage any emergencies at these facilities. Uh, the process is lengthy, it also is, goes beyond this Fire Department, we have the support of the Department of Fire Services, which is the state fire marshal's office, and any projects of the size of the one that we're not going to mention also requires third-party review, and, um, and, and this is a process that we see in any large construction project, whether it's when that fire station was built, or when the elementary school was built, or when Shaw's was built. These are very complex, those are just regular businesses and regular buildings, but they're still very complex as far as fire protection. So it's included in the Massachusetts Fire Code that these projects are required to have a third-party fire protection engineer on behalf of the town of Carver that's paid for by the developer to ensure that this project meets the codes and standards. Um, this, um, this has been going on for just over four years in this Fire Department. We've reviewed several projects, uh, I've had the opportunity to attend many training sessions at the Massachusetts Fire Academy, as well as local training with the Massachusetts Board of Fire Prevention Officers. Uh, there's a lot of information out there, I've heard a lot talked about tonight, and we're not going to get into a tit-for-tat for sure. Some of the information's been accurate, a great deal of it has not. I, I don't want people to be frightened. Again, we already have battery energy storage in town, whether this project moves forward or not, it's likely that it will probably happen in town to some point. I don't want people to be concerned. You have a great Fire Department, they're in big numbers here tonight, they're a big part of our community, let's support them, let's support the people in town that are trying to do the right thing. We hear your concerns, we hear what you're afraid of. We want to put your, your fears and anxieties... Uh, I've put my name and number out there many times in public, if people would like to come into the Fire Department to talk about it, or call me to talk about the process, we're certainly willing to do that. Mr. Moderator, does that answer the question?
Yeah, I believe so, uh, sir. Yeah, all right, excellent, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just want to reiterate that, that we should not be speaking without leaving the monitoring. So when someone else is speaking, it's best to stay quiet and give that person the respect of your time and attention, okay? Um, I did not see who was first.
It was me.
Was, was middle first?
No, it's me.
Okay, sir, I'm gonna go with her, is that okay?
Kendra Tool, 5 Calo Street. Um, I think that we've heard a lot of information, and I think most people probably had their mind made up, so I move the previous question.
Okay, so, I don't have to entertain that motion, uh, and I'm not inclined to entertain that motion unless there's, as long as there's new information that hasn't yet been presented. So, for those who are standing at the mics, or are in line to stand at a mic, can you assure me that you have new information, something that has not already been stated, and again, focuses on the merits of whether we should impose a moratorium, or whether we should not impose a moratorium, not on the, uh, general safety and whatnot of these projects, because the, the idea here is, is we're not trying to block a specific project, we're trying to impose a moratorium, so we can have more time, um, to consider the long-term objectives for additional battery storage facilities in the town and their impact on health, safety, and welfare of the town.
Point of order on the article, the way it's written itself.
Okay, we have a point of order?
Thank you. Alan Dunham, 11 Ricard Street. I'm reading sentence two of Article 38. During the moratorium period, the town shall adopt new zoning bylaws for battery storage, et cetera, et cetera. Does that not bind future town meetings? Because town meeting is the only thing that can approve new bylaws. So is this town meeting not trying to bind a future town meeting for that new bylaw?
So...
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, sir.
Great, uh, town council, because much like a board, select board cannot bind a future select board on something, I question whether a town meeting can bind a future town meeting on a particular subject.
Well, I, I don't believe they can, but Mr. Corvall will address that.
Uh, thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator. Um, no, the, the speaker is correct. Um, a, a vote here tonight cannot, um, mandate that a future town meeting pass a bylaw. Um, and, and I realize that this is written, it, as a directive, shall adopt a new bylaw. However, um, you know, it, we have to interpret that, that phrase, um, according to the law, and what the law says is that in some circumstances, "shall" is a, um, a directory term rather than a mandatory term, which means that, um, in this case, well, it's saying you shall adopt a bylaw, it really is, is meaning you will, you will look into adopting a bylaw. Um, to the extent that it, it seeks to impose a directive on a future meeting, it's simply not binding, um, and would not be interpreted that way, in my opinion.
Okay, I disagree with what a lot of the people that want this would be, but I will take your interpretation, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, leave your next, sir.
With, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we vote on this, Article 38.
Okay, again, we're, we're looking for new ma, new information.
Roger Mary, 12 Jefferson Way, there was no information, it's just that I think we came here to vote on the moratorium.
We already had someone ask to move the question, so, uh, let's not repeat that again. Uh, again, any new information?
Yes, I'm rising, um, today to just say, I believe what we are asking for in the body is time. Time for people to think, time for people to research, time for people to deal with emotions on a project like this. We have people here concerned for life, liberty, their property, they have concerns. We, as a body, can do this. We can grant time. That's all we're being asked, is to grant time. My name is Deb Giswaldo, I live at 204 Main Street, and I do want everybody to look, we have respect for our Fire Department, we know the job they do. We have respect for everybody here. We have an elementary school, we have to hear from our school committee. We are asking for time. That is why people are asking you, Mr. Moderator, to move the question.
Mr. Shea, were you first, or...
Well, thank you, uh, Mr. Moderator. Sarah Hewens, 52 Forest Street. Uh, for those of you who don't know me, I served ten years on the planning board, and I am going to talk about the process. Um, I was the chair of the Plymouth Carver Aquifer Advisory Committee for ten years, and I was your conservation agent for fifteen years. So I have served more than half my life protecting our groundwater, and I had great concerns when I first heard about this project. Um, so the process for me was, I went to our Fire Department. The chief immediately sent me down the hall and told me he wouldn't talk about any type of project, any, any, any battery storage project, and, and I commend him for that. Um, and so, I did my homework, I talked with our assistant deputy fire chief, who's our code enforcement officer and our fire prevention officer, and many of the projects that some of you are very concerned about that happened in the past, what's happening now is a very different type of battery storage. We may not like the look of it, but I can address the water issue, and the process for me was, I did my homework, I talked to the people who know what they're talking about, and as far as the water is concerned, which is the only thing I can really speak to, I feel there's very, very low probability of this actually harming our groundwater. And I was, I was very disturbed at the cards that were sent out. I was very disturbed at the cards that were sent out, because it felt like, um, fear-mongering to me. Yes, we should care about our groundwater.
Folks, uh, again, we have to stay quiet while someone else is speaking.
But the process...
Hold on one sec, sir, I'm just trying to respect you a little bit here, so...
Certain.
Please have respect for the, the speaker. The moaning and the, the talking and whatnot while the speaker is speaking is extremely disrespectful. So I would like to see that stop, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so, I feel that the postcard that we got got me all worked up. I, I understand it got a lot of you worked up, but I think that if, if we really did our due diligence, whether or not you vote to have this moratorium or not, um, I think in, at least in terms of the groundwater, if you go through that process, I believe it's going to be, th- these things are relatively safe, very low chance of, uh, a groundwater pollution. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Shea, new information only.
Yes, sir. Cornelius Shea, 148 Plymouth Street in Carver. Uh, thank you all for coming. Um, if this many people had been here before, maybe we wouldn't be standing here now, but this, you should vote yes in this article, I'll keep it short, because there are no bylaws to protect the health and safety of the people of this town, there's nothing on the books, it's an allowed use. We depend heavily on the Fire Department, who've done an excellent job with their recommendations in all of these projects. They're not the ones to be held accountable. It's the town that needs to be held accountable, because it ha, it should be done within the bylaws of the town of Carver.
Okay, so the, the point that there's not, the bylaws have already been made, so...
All right.
Let's, let's go up with something new, all right? All right, we have one, one more, do, do you have new information, or, oh, okay, you're standing up. Okay, um, so with that said, I see no hands and no further movement to the microphones. Okay, um, this does require a two-thirds vote, um, and with that said, we'll go ahead and open the voting. Again, you have thirty seconds to vote. Ten seconds? And we'll go ahead and close the vote. Okay, and by two-thirds, it's already... The motion passes with three hundred and eighty-seven yes, uh, seventy-six no, uh, for a total of four hundred and sixty-three. Uh, thank you, everybody, appreciate you helping us to stay on track there. Uh, and with that said...
Motion, I have a motion, please.
What's that?
I have a motion.
Uh, hold on one sec. Um, so, with that said, I just want to, want to, um, uh, address some of the comments that were made before we took this up, is that obviously a lot of people were here just for this. Uh, if we could ask you to stick with us for a bit longer tonight, uh, we do have a lot of other business here, we don't want to lose our quorum this way. Um, so, uh, please bear with us here, so, uh...
I have a motion, please.
Yep.
Motion to reconsider Article 38.
Okay, so I have a motion to reconsider, uh, on Article 38. Okay, motion's been made and, uh, seconded. Um, the art, um, the motion to reconsider is, uh, um... It is debatable per bylaws, um, and it requires a two-third, wait, is it... I'm sorry, it's not mentioned in the bylaws, so it would not be debatable, um... So, uh, okay, so we have a motion made and seconded to reconsider, it requires a two-thirds vote, um, and so, um, in a moment here, we will go ahead and put that up for a vote, you guys prepared? Yep.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Point of order?
Could, could you explain what the reconsideration vote is for this article, please?
So, the, the motion to reconsider, if it were to pass, uh, would, um, would bring the article back up, uh, for reconsideration, for us to vote on it again. Okay, no, outburst, please, thank you. Uh, there is a way for you to share your voice, okay, and so we're gonna vote on this, and then you can say yes or no, okay?
Point of order again, Mr. Moderator.
Uh, we have another point of order? All right, we have a point of order on the floor. Every, please, silence.
The purpose of a reconsideration vote is you can't bring it up at another meeting. That's the intent of, of this reconsideration vote.
It's not that you can't bring it up at another meeting, it's that you can't bring it up again, uh, under this town meeting.
Right, this town meeting.
You said another meeting.
On Thursday, we can't bring it back up.
Right.
That's why, that's why this is being done.
Uh, hold on, okay, we shouldn't discuss the merits of why someone has made a motion or, or not, okay? Because that is, is not clear, okay? The facts of the matter is, is that, uh, Mr. Bellman is correct, is that, that the bylaws state that the motion to reconsider can only be made once. So, once this is either approved or not, uh, then, then it could not be reconsidered again. That is a fact. The merits of whether or not that's what the person who made the motion were trying to do is not at, at stake here.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Another point of order?
Motion to reconsider puts this thing to bed for this town meeting.
Yes.
Not in perpetuity.
Right.
So, it can't come back on Thursday, it can't come back on next Tuesday and Wednesday, when we come back after that, because that's about as far as we're gonna get.
What are you trying to do to us here?
Tell him.
Okay.
Could you clarify the vote, please? What a yes and what a no.
Okay, so, a vote yes to reconsider the article will, will bring the article back up, uh, for reconsideration, so, so we can, um, we can open it up for debate again, and then we can go to, a, a, and again, the debate would have to be based on new information. Uh, if we vote no, then we do not reconsider the article, uh, and as, uh, Mr. Germain has just mentioned, uh, it cannot be brought up for reconsideration again. Uh, is this a debate on the article, or is this a point of order?
No, it's a question for you.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay, our question over here, many people have, is this, if we vote yes, does that mean we can start up this discussion again?
Yes.
Yes.
If we vote no, you put it to bed, it's done for this town meeting, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, with that said, uh, we're gonna open the vote. Okay, with that said, we're going to open the vote. For the, this is for the vote to reconsider, yes means that we will reconsider it and bring it up for debate again. No means that we will not reconsider and we will move on. You have thirty seconds. Ten seconds left. All right, close the vote. Okay, with a two-thirds majority, the motion does not pass with forty-six, four and four hundred and four against. Again, the motion to reconsider Article 38 does not pass.
Do people understand and everybody leaves and we can bring it up again and vote on it?
No, we can't. No. No, it's done.
All right, put the whole thing.
At this point, the article cannot be reconsidered further.
Not this year.
We don't have any business on the floor, so is this a point of order?
Point of order.
Or a motion or?
Yeah, it's a motion to move up. I'd like to make a motion to move up Article 8, the transfer of ownership to the Cranberry Village wells. Due to the fact that, you know, there's a lot of seniors here that have come for this and having to carry this over to a Thursday night would be, you know, a real hardship for a lot of those residents. And with the timeframe being ten-thirty to close this meeting, this more than likely would get moved to a Thursday night.
I'll second that.
I'd also like to ask the people to just stay for a little while longer. We stayed and we talked for, you know, you guys. So it'd be nice to stay.
Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded to advance Article 8 to be the next article in line. Guys, quiet down. Please. So a motion made and seconded to advance Article 8 to be taken up next. We will open that for debate.
Just call a question, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, seeing no hands and no motion to the mics, we'll go ahead and open the vote. Ten seconds. Okay, close the vote. Okay, the motion passes with two hundred and ninety-six, four and fifty-eight against. Okay, quiet down, please. Quiet down, please. Okay, so on Article 8, transfer of ownership of the Cranberry Village well, do we have a motion?
A motion to approve Article 8 is written in the warrant.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion that's been made and seconded to approve Article 8, transfer of ownership of the Cranberry Village well. Do we have any presentations by the sponsor of this article? No. Oh. Okay, your sponsor of the article?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, Dave Seintop, 73 Center Street, Carver. I am the Director of Operations. This article was brought up presently, the town of Carver owns and operates a public water supply. What this water supply serves is solely Cranberry Village residents. Throughout discussions with the town and the ownership of the village over the last year and a half, we have come to terms that the town's position on this is we oversee the operation of the, we contract out the operation of the well. We oversee it as a third party. We don't feel that the town needs to be involved in this. Through discussion, Cranberry Village would like to take back ownership of the well. The town does not benefit from the well. The residents of the village pay into an enterprise system, so their water fees go into an enterprise system. They're self-funded. Town does not profit off this. The town does not benefit from it. The town is not going to expand it. There is property that goes along with the wells. There is a wellhead protection area on that land that's not buildable due to the size of the wellhead protection area for the wells. It was given to the town by David Piper back in the eighties. It was granted, gifted to the town. So the stance of the town is we are to gift it back to Cranberry Village and remove ourselves out of the operation.
Thank you, sir. Okay, with that, we'll open it to debate.
Mr. Moderator, I have a USB that I'd like to present with my slides. I've limited down, like I've sent to you before, to five-minute presentation. I think there's seventeen slides that I'd like to present and that's what I'd like to do with my presentation.
So we can't accept a USB drive from the floor. It has to be something that's already been reviewed and approved. So you did provide me with something that I reviewed and approved previously. The slides that I have approved are on a laptop that we can provide for you to show. And just to be clear, our conversation was about keeping the slides to visual aids, pictures, graphs, charts, things like that, that cannot be stated in words and that we would remove all slides that had words on them because we felt that you could make those points verbally. We don't want to set a precedent for town meeting whereby folks can utilize town resources, namely the projector at town meeting, to put their words up on the screen. We feel that, or I feel, that you can make those points verbally. Any attempt to put additional information up on the screen tends to circumvent the spirit of the rules around debate. So we give you three minutes for debate. That gives you an opportunity to speak and say whatever it is that you need to with regards to the article. But we're not also affording you the ability to post additional messages in the room in order to augment that. I think that you can, you're very well qualified, very well prepared to tell us what you think. And we can use those visual aids, those maps, the graphs, charts on the screen.
Is this going to be the new policy for these type of ones? Because in the past, you have allowed not only visual of maps and graphs and whatnot, but you also have allowed people to put a yes or no, a yes does this, a no does this. That has been allowed and you've allowed that, all right?
Yeah, that's for folks that are making a presentation as a sponsor of an article. So we allow folks that are making presentations as a sponsor of the article to do what's necessary to explain why they've put the article together for us.
So I just want to make it clear, so it's okay for up here to give the people information one way, but when you want to do a separate, distinct, opposite end, you don't want us to do that. So I mean, I want to make it clear that...
No, I'm just making a clear distinction between making a presentation on town meeting floor as a sponsor of an article where it is that person's duty to make that article clear to folks and it's under their official responsibilities to do that. We're providing this equipment and whatnot for them. If we were to give everyone who were speaking in debate the opportunity to put additional words up on the screen, we'd be here for a very, very long time. So we're not going to set a precedent whereby the projector is used to put your own words up there, which you are clearly able to do because you're here to speak and there are the limitations of the three minutes. So that is my final ruling on that. So if you'd like to use the slides that were approved, I'd be more than happy to share those up on the screen. We don't want to limit anything that you have to say. You're still able to say everything that you would like to say. We're just limiting the slides to necessary visual aids that you cannot put into writing so that we can expedite things and make it easier for us to administer this, so.
I disagree. I think it just limits the public freedom of speech.
Well, I mean, your freedom of speech, like I said, you can say whatever you want. So that's my final ruling. There will be no further argument about it. So would you like us to use the slides?
Could you please? I'll use the slides of what you presented, but they're missing the ones that really are important.
Okay, well, I encourage you to speak towards those ones.
And I will. While they're getting that out, I'll just start, okay? This property, what is told to us in the warrant article isn't everything, okay? It's seventeen point one-three-oh acres here, okay? This land, as it was said, was donated to the town. It was donated to the town for a couple of different reasons. I think the most primary one, it was costing a lot of money to be run. That way, giving it to the town allows the town to now take over this property. Again, seventeen acres. Want to switch to the next one, please? Okay, this is the property lines. It's a large one, okay? It was donated to the town and then what ended up happening recently is it came before our town that we weren't billing them accurately. We weren't taking the right readings and therefore it was costing the town money and it was costing the residents more money because we don't know if it was right or wrong, the bills. In the process of us taking on this wonderful well system here, it's cost us $400,000 to repair them. Switch to the next one.
Next slide.
Next slide. Okay. We paid legal expenses to this process of going through this whole permitting process of getting rid of the wells, okay? We were told that the wells have no value to the town, but they do have value. They have value in land, but they also have value in what's going to happen to our future. Okay? Right now, the valuation is three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, as you can see. All right? Is that worth money to us? Yes. You can switch. These are the wells. This is the actual building here. It's got wonderful graffiti on it, generator. This is the old one that's there. There's three wellheads. You can switch to the next one. Okay? Next slide. All right, there's two wellheads on the top and the left and then there's some test wells. The town did test well drilling back in the eighties to try to find water for our town. Next one is the well protection area there. Again, this wasn't in your warrant article here, all right? These are the actual property and the protection area. This current language of the article, all right, is a legislative process. They went ahead and it doesn't allow you to go through the normal process of procurement where you have to turn around and actually follow a process. Can you switch to the next one, please? What hasn't been done, all right? What hasn't been done is no other options have been considered by the Board of Selectmen, no evaluation of the property, no appraisal of the property, no site visit by the selectmen. I went there, as you can see the pictures, all right? No public hearing is held and right now, there's no MOU created. What the future holds? Well, if you look down there, the well protection area is at the, can you go back one slide? Okay, the well protection location is at the top, the bottom is the South Cala landfill. The town doesn't have any property down in that area. If that landfill fails, what do we do?
Is this a procedural question? Yeah, we're just a little over three minutes. So, Mr. Bellman, if you're about to wrap up, he assured me it was about four minutes. So you think we could afford him an extra minute?
On the right-hand side here is potential to be built. We need to keep this town-owned land protected for our future, okay? The future expansion comes in our master plan. It goes into our open space plan. You can switch the next couple of slides. Okay, our master plan, as always said, protect the water, protect the wells. We need to protect it. Well, we've been protecting it. Let's continue to protect it. I feel that the town hasn't done its due diligence to know who Cranberry Village is and are they prepared to take on the role of a public water supply system? We don't know. The Board of Selectmen don't know. They never talked to them. They never come in to talk to us. We need more, more information. We just asked for more information for a bylaw. Protect our property, protect our wells. We need to protect our water. Well, we need to protect our land too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman. Okay, in the middle here.
Brenda McCall, 34 Kennedy Drive, Carver. I am also the President of the Board of Directors at Cranberry Village. To be able to speak on this, they've had forty years. You guys have had the wells, Carver's had them for forty years. For those forty years, the only people that have maintained those wells, paid for those wells, paid for all repairs are the two hundred and eighty homes, those residents of Cranberry Village. That $400,000, that was a grant that was given to the town. So the funding, the enterprise fund, we have paid water bills monthly in excess of $12,000, $8,000. I want to say our enterprise fund at this point is somewhere over $200,000 of our money. We've maintained them. We've, in all honesty, we would be able to maintain them better than the town. Bob pointed out that the building is filled with graffiti. The last time Carver lost power, the residents of Cranberry Village lost electricity too. We lost electricity and we lost our water because the wells have not been maintained. As far as Cranberry Village being able to maintain them, we just put in a $4.4 million water project in our community. We put in all-new water mains, all-new laterals to the homes. We are two hundred and eighty homes of very independent people that are, know what we're doing. We can maintain these wells. Financially, we've proven it. We've done it for forty years. The town of Carver for forty years hasn't been able to figure out how to get water out of there for anybody but Cranberry Village. We have the backing of, you know, the town. They've spent money in that enterprise fund for things that, you know, maybe shouldn't have. I mean, there's a truck in the fleet of Carver that we paid for, I believe along with, you know, some of the North Carver Water District. I just think it's our water, it's our wells, we pay all of the bills. It's no burden to the town of Carver. Actually, if we take the wells back, we will pay taxes on that seventeen acres of land, which is non-buildable land. There's nothing and that'll average out approximately maybe five or six thousand dollars a year that the town will collect in taxes for that land. And that breaks out to about, I don't know, three dollars a house and I'm pretty sure Cranberry Village can withstand that within our budget. So I'm asking the residents from Cranberry Village and the residents of Carver just to give us what everybody else has. All the other communities are in charge of their own water and we want to be able to do the same. It's a burden for the town. I have the financials. You know, right now, the budget is asking for $72,000 to put in the budget. Our water bills now would be consistently with the water repairs we've done, thirty-six, forty-eight thousand dollars a year. Where's the town going to make up the difference for that money? They're going to have to keep raising the water rates for the residents to cover the costs that it's costing them to maintain the wells, to keep it up. And that's not fair to us. We want our wells... We want our wells back. We want to control our own destiny, and I'm asking for your vote to do that.
Okay, we're on the right here, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gary LaBoa, Eight Lincoln Circle in Cranberry Village. I am a member of the Board of Directors of Cranberry Village, and Selectman Belvin asked the question of who Cran... We don't know who Cranberry Village is. Cranberry Village is a multimillion-dollar corporation, and it's owned by all of the residents. It's a resident-owned community. We are financially stable. We have a great credit rating. We have no problem refinancing our loan and our mortgage. We had no problem getting $4.4 million for doing our roads and our water system, and every resident in that park is an owner because it's a resident-owned community. We've had informational meetings. We've let the residents know what's going on. They are in favor of this. You've already heard from the town operations person who is in favor of this. Four out of five of the selectmen are in favor of this. They've done their due diligence, and they know what's going on. So we would like to ask the people to vote to get the wells back to Cranberry Village so we can control our water source. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Oh, we have a point of order?
Is the Gator bus driver here in the room?
This is not a procedural question, but...
Couple of ladies looking for the Gator bus driver.
Oh, okay. So the question is, is the Gator bus driver in the room? Okay. Okay. All right, everybody, please quiet down. All right, seeing no hands... Oh, we got a hand over here. Yep.
Just a clarification. So this is... It doesn't go through procurement because it's a legislative act, so it's petitioning the legislature to formulate this transfer.
All right. Thanks for the clarification, sir. All right, seeing no hands and no motion to the mics, we're going to go ahead and open the vote.
What do we do?
Out of the way.
Motion to approve.
Good God.
So...
Sorry, Mr. Moderator.
Good.
Which exactly is correct?
And as we're voting, this does require a majority vote, and the select board voted
four to one on this, so I'll give you thirty more seconds on that. And we'll close the vote. On Article Eight, Transfer of Ownership of the Cranberry Village Well, the motion passes by a majority vote, 348 yes and 28 no. Thank you. All right, so we're going to go back to our...
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
There was the rest of the crowd.
We have a point of order?
Can I take Article Thirty out of order?
What is your grounds for taking Thirty out of order?
Right now, I'm paying for a lawyer for the district. I should say, we are all paying for a lawyer for the district, almost $200 an hour to be here. To come back for another $200 an hour, I think, is not a good use of town money, all right? No district money. I think that is a great reason to push this through.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Oh, we have another point of order? I haven't ruled on the previous point of order, so hold on.
People before they go.
Well, so you made a point of order, but are you wanting to make a motion?
Yeah, that's my motion, I'm sorry.
Okay, so can you restate the motion, please?
My motion is to take Article Thirty, Carver, Marion, William, Regional Refuge Disposal District Agreement, out of order.
Okay, a motion made and seconded. Mr. Germaine, is your point of order regarding this motion?
Well, it was... I would have liked an opportunity to make a motion to reconsider Article Eight, which is at the request of the Cranberry Village leaders. But now, there's a motion and second already on the floor. Mr. Belvin, would you be so kind to withdraw that motion just till we do a reconsideration so we can close this, then we'll go with you.
I'd like to go forward with this, please.
Of course.
Okay.
I have a problem with that.
Are you kidding me, boy?
All right, all right, all right. Calm, just quiet down. All right, again, you can only speak when recognized, all right?
Sorry.
But that's not just to Mr. Germaine, that's to everybody in the audience, okay? A lot of shouting out, calling out, whatever. This is not how we conduct a civilized town meeting. You speak when recognized. With that said, there's been a point of order made about whether or not we should reconsider the other article. We do have a motion on the floor right now. If we would like to move to other business, we would have to table the motion that's on the floor right now and then entertain another motion.
Motion to table.
Second.
No debate, immediate vote, Mr. Moderator.
What's that?
Motion to table is not debatable.
It is not debatable. It requires a second and a two-thirds vote. Again, with a shouting out. So are you making a motion, Mr. Germaine?
I made a motion to table.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to table the current motion on the floor with regards to moving up Article Thirty to be called on next. So motion's been made and seconded. We're going to put it to an immediate vote. Are we prepared?
Two-thirds.
Yep, two-thirds vote. We'll go ahead and open the vote. We'll close the vote. All right, the motion passes with a two-thirds majority. The motion to table moving of Article Thirty. So now, I can entertain a motion.
Motion to reconsider Article Eight.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to reconsider Article Eight. Again, this is not debatable, and this by law requires a two-thirds vote. So we will put this up for a vote, and we will open the voting now.
Make sure you get an okay. Some of these, it just flashes and didn't say okay.
Ten seconds. By two-thirds majority, the motion fails to reconsider Article Eight, Transfer of Ownership of the Cranberry Well. Thirty-seven yes and 262 no. Mr. Belvin, do you have a motion?
Make a motion to take Article Thirty out of order.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to take Article Thirty out of order. Do we have a second? Motion's been made and seconded to take Article Thirty out of order. All right, with that said, we will open it to debate. Sir?
Yeah, so first thing, Bendexter 149 High Street. At some point, we've got to start following the warrant here. I think that's important. I think people look at the warrant, they expect that things will be in somewhat of an order, and if counsel for the Water District is here... Well, this was originally Article Thirty, so how long did they expect to be here in the first place? Can we just follow the warrant, please? That's what I'm asking for. I'm urging you to vote no to take the article out or thank you.
Sure.
Good evening, Robird and 30 Priscilla Mullins Way. At what point does it become just too much? We're wasting a lot of time moving things around. You want to do odd next. This isn't Burger King, have it your way. Let's do it in order and keep it civilized. Thank you.
We have a lot of folks that are concerned about how much time it's taking us and so on and so forth, so I can assure you that it would be a lot more expedient if we're able to keep quiet and follow the rules. Thank you.
Other questions, please, Mr. Moderator?
So seeing no further motion to the microphones, we'll go ahead and put this to a vote. So on the issue of bringing Article Thirty up next, we will open the vote. Yes, two-thirds, yep. And we'll close the vote. So on the motion to move Article Thirty out of order, it fails with a two-thirds with ninety-two yes and 178 no. So we will not be taking Article Thirty out of order. Okay, so moving back to the actual order.
Mr. Moderator?
We have a...
Mr. Moderator, through you, I would like to make an amendment to Article Four as written in the town warrant.
What's that?
I move to amend Article Four by reducing the amount to be...
You can't amend unless a motion's already been made. So an amendment is a secondary motion, so there has to be a motion on the floor to amend.
Mr. Moderator, I believe she's following the amendments to...
Yeah, so that's a... Okay, so that's a different kind of... So that's an amendment to the proposed, like, to what was put in the warrant?
I believe that's what she's proposing.
Okay. So then, all we would need is for someone to make a motion on Article Four as written in the Amendments to Motions handout that was included in the information that was presented with everybody when they came in.
Oh, okay, so I would...
What's that?
So vote.
Second.
Okay. All right, yeah, yeah. So I'm reading this now, and with the advice of Town Council, this particular article in the Amendments to Motions is written as an amendment and not as a main motion itself. So we can't motion as written in this sheet. We have to make the motion as it's written on the warrant article, and then we can amend it.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, motion to move Article Four as written in the warrant?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion made and seconded to approve Article Four as written in the warrant.
Mr. Moderator, a motion to amend Article Four as written in the Amendments to Motion handout that was handed out when everyone came in?
Okay, I have a...
Would you like me to read that?
Yes, please.
I move to amend Article Four by reducing the amount to be transferred from ambulance receipts from 260,000 to 160,000, and by reducing the amount appropriated in line AA for the transfer to capital stabilization from 123,156 to 23,156.
Second.
Second. Third, fourth.
Okay, I have a motion made and seconded to amend Article Four with the language that was just explained to us by Mr. Townsend. I will go ahead and open the amendment up for debate. This is strictly with regards to the amendment. Seeing no motion to the mics...
Mr. Moderator?
Yep.
On the amendment?
Yep.
Do you want me to stand up there? This is actually a FinCom thing.
No, so if you're presenting in your official duties, then you can stay where you are.
Let me see that piece. All we're doing is clarifying. The $260,000 that was coming out of the ambulance account, out of the ambulance department for the new ambulance, out of the EMS, would leave them short. Typically, what we've done in the past, and it's been done several times, is they've asked if we'd let them borrow $100,000 towards that ambulance. So they'll kick in 160, we'll give them the other 100. That's why you'll see the amendment was made to reduce the 260 to 160, and the difference in AA, instead of putting 123,000 away, we're putting 23,000 away. The numbers don't change in the overall scheme of things, but they change in what money comes out of what account. Mike has assured us that he's concerned that going into the new fiscal year, being $100,000 additionally short, that he didn't want to put that department in peril. So it was discussed. Capital Outlet talked about it. FinCom talked about it. The Select Board talked about it. We all felt that it was fine to do it this way rather than wait until something happens and then he comes back to us and says, you know, "Can you help me out here?" I would much rather just do it this way. Now, he'll give back, you know, $20,000 a year, come back out of it to pay this back for five years, and we're nice guys, we don't charge him any interest. Is that about right, Mike?
Sounds good.
So that's the reason for the amendment.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Okay. So seeing no further motion to the mics or raised hands, we'll go ahead and put the amendment up for a vote. This is on the Amendment to Article Four as written in the Amendments to Motions handout. We'll go ahead and open the voting now. This requires a majority vote. And we'll close the voting. So on the Amendment to Article Four passes with 235 yes and 10 no. All right, on the capital improvements budget, we're back to this item, which is on the floor. So we have a motion made and seconded to approve the capital improvements budget. I'm just going to explain how we are going to go about this. We always, or in past several years, we've used a whole process for these items. So basically, I'm going to read through each item underneath the purpose, all in fiscal year '23. All right. year '23. And if you would like to vote on that item separately and discuss that one separately, all you need to do is just shout out "hold," and we will pull that one out and discuss that one and vote on that one separately. Otherwise, any of the items that have not been held, we will vote on them as a whole first. And actually, before I do that, is there, there's no presentations or anything on this, as far as I'm aware? No? Okay. Alright, so on item A, energy efficiency project to reduce electric consumption; B, replacement of 1992 Easy Beaver wood chipper; C, scag mower; D, townwide maintenance contracts; E, town hall siding; F, ambulance purchase and equip; G, replace jaws of life tools airbag on rescue one; H, replace fire command car two; I, police fire radio infrastructure; J, police cruiser replacements, two vehicles purchase and equip; K, replace four external defibrillators; L, townwide technology, infrastructure and equipment; M, Carver Elementary School education technology; N, middle, high school education technology; O, district-wide curriculum upgrade modern education.
Oh.
We've got a hold on O, district-wide curriculum; P, school bus replacement, 71 passenger buses purchase and equip; Q, school bus, 32 passenger wheelchair bus; R, classroom modernization plan; S, middle, high school lobby renovation; T, visual and performing arts pathway TV studio; U, middle, high school auditorium lighting and AV booth; V, curriculum equipment upgrade; W, townwide capital network implementation and oversight; X, annual reduction in debt exclusion for new elementary school, solar; Y, project management disclosure statement in short-term interest; Z, reduction of debt for library HVAC system.
Hold.
We've got a hold on Z, reduction of debt for library HVAC. AA, transfer to capitalization stabilization, capital stabilization.
Point of order.
We have a point of order.
The transfer to capitalization and debt stabilization would be 23,152, and we didn't put a hold on the ambulance purchase and equipment. Item F, that will now be 160 instead of 260, as amended.
No. Want a clarification? Doesn't the ambulance still cost 260?
Yeah, but we...
Hold on. Statements to the moderator, please.
Yeah, but this is only going to be 160. No, it's this that changed to 160.
So, yeah, so...
That stays 260.
Are the items that you're referring to already covered in the amendment?
Yeah, they were in the amendment.
Okay, so, alright, we're good then.
Leave it.
Okay. Alright, with that, we will go ahead and put all items except for item O and item Z up for a vote. So this requires a two-thirds vote, and the Select Board, I don't have any recommendations on this, so Select Board recommendation is?
Select Board recommended four to zero.
Finance Committee?
Five, one, one.
And Capital Outlay?
Three to zero.
Okay.
It's four to zero.
I'm sorry, four to zero.
With that, we'll go ahead and put Article IV, with the exception of O and Z, up for a vote. Go ahead and open the voting now. And close the vote, please. Alright, so all items except for O and Z have passed with a vote of 213 yes and 12 no. That's a two-thirds majority, okay. So going back to item O, we'll go ahead and open that up for debate.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Alan Dunham, 11 McCard Street. I'm just kind of confused. If someone could explain what they mean by district-wide curriculum upgrade modern education? I mean, is this computers or something like that, or is this a whole type of curriculum? Because, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I...
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, sir. I can address this in two ways. One, I just want to point out that the Massachusetts Department of Education has revised and updated many of the curriculum frameworks over the past couple of years, including science and technology, engineering, history and social studies, math, English, language arts, digital literacy and computer science. So in the past year, they've kind of said to us, they're looking at their frameworks and they're revising and what they're asking us to do. So some of these resources will be used to support textbooks, curriculum to support us aligning ourselves with the frameworks. The second piece of this is, and the town meeting over the last couple of years has been very supportive of the growth of our pathways programs. So the public schools are excited to expand our pathways programs, which provide students with opportunities to explore careers while becoming both college and career-ready. Over the last couple of years, Carver Middle High School staff and administration have developed seven pathways for students' exploration as they go to high school, really focusing on being college and career. Those pathways are biotechnology, computer science, entrepreneurship and finance, environmental agricultural sciences, health and wellness, hospitality, manufacturing, engineering, technology and visual and performing arts. I want to highlight specifically our manufacturing, engineering, technology pathway, which has actually been approved and recognized by the state as an innovation pathway. It's the only innovation pathway in technology in southeast of Massachusetts, and this, it's here in this school. So the money and the funding for this program is going to go to support the build-out and the growth of our manufacturing, engineering, technology programs that we're offering our students. We're also in the process of having our environmental agricultural sciences pathway approved at the middle high school as an innovation pathway. We've gone through the process of putting our curriculum up against the state's standards to have the innovation pathway, and we're hoping to get that approval, we're actually going to find out in the next couple of weeks when we have that. What these pathways allow our students to do is really focus on maybe beyond being just college-ready, they're also ready for career-ing and going off and taking opportunities, then explore things beyond just college itself. And over the last couple of years, if you look at some of the things that we have purchased, if you go down into our technology wing, we have a Tormac machine, which in terms of engineering and design. So where these funds, which the town has given to the school the last couple of years, has really helped us build out these programs, and our goal of this money is to use to support those programs going forward.
Mr. Moderator, through you, I thank Mr. Neef for that explanation. I fully support what you're trying to do, however, what I'm not going to, cannot support is doing it through Capital Outlay. Now, a few years ago, when we first delved into Capital Outlay to buy the Chromebooks that was brought up, well, couldn't that be, you know, start a path down, asking the school to ask, funding from Capital Outlay for more and more things, and it was, oh, no, this is a special case? I was one of the ones voting strongly in favor of that. To me, this is just going down the wrong path. I think you should have the funding for it, I just don't think it should be coming out of Capital Outlay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, seeing no hands, no further motion, do we have a hands? Okay. Would you like a microphone, or?
I just wanted to...
You need to speak into a microphone. Are you, are you speaking debate on this article? Yeah?
No.
You need to speak into a microphone. If you're unable to approach, we can bring you one. Yep.
I've been a resident here for 29 years. I'm now also a single grandparent raising a grandchild. And 27 years ago, we didn't have these programs here. Our kids went to Old Colony or some of the other programs that were available.
So...
These programs are important to be right here in our school, where our kids now, and if this is what this mayor needs to make these programs happen, so that our kids can learn instead of just be glued to a computer, then I'm all for it. I'm all for it.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Mr. Neef.
So respectfully, the comment should be focused on the merits of, you know, whether or not we should spend this money out of the Capital Outlay committee funding. Yep. Okay. Alright, alright, you've made your statement. No outbursts, again, and you do need leave the moderator to speak. Seeing no other hands or no other motion to the mics, we'll go ahead and open the vote. Yes, it's two-thirds. And close the vote. So on Article O, for district-wide curriculum upgrade of modern education, the motion passes with 184 for and 32 against. Moving on to item Z, reduction of debt for library HVAC system, do we have any comments on that?
Mr. Moderator, through you, could I comment on this?
Yep.
From Capital Outlay. I just wanted to talk about this, because this is one of the bigger items that the Capital Outlay had looked at this year. So, sorry, sorry if you can't hear me. So the library department had, they came to us and they need new HVAC for the library. So the air conditioner is not working and there's portable ACs in there right now. I don't know if anyone's spending there, but it is pretty hot in the summer, and they said that when it's over 80 degrees in the summer, it does not bear oil in there. So what they were looking to do is replace the HVAC as well as the heating system and upgrade it. The way this building is currently built, to actually go in there and fix the HVAC today, you'd have to remove the roof off the building. So the town is looking to not go through that option, to actually put different handlers in. And I'm sure Dave could speak much better than I could on that.
Alright.
So the project was initially slated for $1,006,000, but with the cost of everything going up, it's probably more likely going to be $1,008,000. After Free Cash was certified, Capital Outlay felt like we had enough money to put about $960,000 aside. So what we're planning to do with this money is put it aside and earmark it for the library HVAC to be replaced. So they've already gone out and had an engineering study and are ready to go out to bid on July 1st, once the new FY '23 budget starts. The plan is at that point to go out and short-term borrow for the rest, for the whole project. So instead of bonding this project over 10 or 20 years, what we're hoping to do is to short-term borrow and pay the interest rate on what the, what the project would be worth, which is $1,008,000. So the interest rate in that is 2.5%. We've also got slated into the budget for next year, $500,000, and maybe could put more away to be able to pay for this whole project in full once the project is done. So I just wanted to let everyone know that that's why you're only seeing 960 of this, even though the project is probably going to be worth more than the $200,000, $1,008,000. And we felt as a committee that this was the best option for the town. It doesn't lock us into a 10- or 20-year bond, it's just short-term borrowing, and we only have to pay interest as we're taking the money out.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Alright, seeing no hands and no motion to the mic, we'll go ahead and put item Z, reduction of debt for library HVAC system, to a vote, so we'll go ahead and open the vote. We'll go ahead and close the vote. So on item Z, reduction of debt for library HVAC system, the motion passes with 176 yes and 29 no. And with that, we have surpassed our 10:30 timeframe. Hold on one second, because we need a motion to adjourn to another time...
Mr. Moderator, I'd make a motion that we adjourn to Thursday night, April 14th at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded to adjourn to Thursday night at 6:00 PM on the table here. Alright, so this requires a majority vote, so we'll go ahead and open the vote. Just quiet down for just a little bit longer, I know it's been a long night. And let's close the vote. So on the motion to adjourn to Thursday night at 6 o'clock PM, we have 179 yes and 22 no, so the motion carries. I do just want to remind everybody that you drop your devices in the boxes in the lobby hallway, and, oh, sorry, drop your devices and also recycle your warrants. There's a box for that in the hallway. Appreciate everybody's time tonight, it was a long ruling night. I please encourage everybody to come back on Thursday night, because we do need a quorum in order to finish this business. Thank you.